All right. Good evening, everyone. I will now call the Monday, August 21st, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting into order. First up this evening is our invocation and pledge of allegiance. We invite the public to lead us in a invocation. If there's someone in the audience, no one has signed up this evening that would like to deliver an invocation and lead us in a pledge of allegiance, they may do so. Seeing no one jumping up this evening, I will hand that off to Commissioner Owen Etheridge this evening.
Let us pray. Father, with bowed heads and humbled hearts, we come before you tonight asking you to give us the discernment and wisdom as we deal with issues facing the citizens of Currituck that we have the honor and the privilege to serve. Father, thank you for giving us our county that we have here. We are truly blessed, and we ask you to continue to bless our county and bless our citizens. Father, as the new school year is starting, give our students and our staff at the schools what they need to make sure that our students are getting the best possible education possible. Father, be with us as we go home this evening. Keep us all safe from harm, and bring us back at our next meeting. All these blessings we ask in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Owen. All right. Next up, our ethics awareness and conflict of interest reminder from the county attorney.
Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interests, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
So that would be me this evening. I have business dealings with one of the applicants up here. So on our second agenda item, PB 87-19 Buck Island Pud, I will ask the board to be excused, and I'm to be recused myself when we get to that. Also, just in the interest of full disclosure, many times commissioners meet with applicants before they come before the board to feel us out on how they think it'll go. So before they submit to the county, we're actually allowed to meet with them. And I know myself and Commissioner Jarvis have met with our applicant on the Monterey shores to find out, you know, what we would like to see going forward, and I believe commissioner payment as well. But this is long before anything was submitted. And after that point, myself, I have had no contact with the applicant since the first initial meetings several, or six months ago, better now at this point, much longer than that. So just in the interest of disclosing that, next up is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, can I have a motion for approval, please?
Please.
Mike, thank you. All favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up is public comment. A statement before we get into that. It looks like everyone signed up this evening for public comment on agenda items. As those are quasi-judicial items, we cannot consider public comments as part of those. So when we get into those agenda items, we will call you for those particular agenda items rather than public comment. There is one "but" in there, and that is for Algonquin subdivision. That matter has been before this Board of Commissioners, and as such, we have closed the evidentiary portion of that and public comment that was made when this came before us many months ago. And they are here tonight to get approval of denial based on what they submitted many months ago. And so this will be kind of a pro forma thing to deal with Algonquin. So for those of you who showed up tonight, you will not be able to speak to that as we have closed the public comment portion of that. It is just up to the board to make a decision at this point in time going forward. So with that said, is there anyone who didn't sign up for public comment that would like to speak tonight that is not something that's on our agenda? All right. Seeing no one, I will close public comment at this time.
Can I ask a question?
Please come up to the lecture, if you would, just give us your name and address when you come up and...
Alclaw, Wosnick, 100 Indian Kettle Road, Jarvisburg, Algonquin subdivision.
Okay.
There's been changes in the plat, which I don't know if yous are aware of. And first of all, I'd like to thank Joel for doing the right thing, keeping things between the ditches. But there's stuff that we found out that we need answers to.
Okay. Well, some of that's going to be addressed. Kevin Kemp, I believe, you're going to be addressing the subdivision. So he's going to be talking to us from a staff level about anything of that nature, and hopefully those will answer your questions.
What if it don't? Do I get to ask the question?
No, you don't. The public comment is closed, and it's not public comment. It's an evidentiary hearing. So it is for you to put on evidence of something you have direct knowledge of. But that phase has been closed at this point. And the way North Carolina law works, we can't, we'd have to rehear it. We'd have to go through the whole process again and start from scratch to rehear that. And if we denied it, it would be over a year before we could rehear that. And that wouldn't be fair to our applicant in this case.
People that live on the street, we weren't aware that it was closed up. We heard that, we were told that it was just tabled.
It was. But we'd already gone through all the motions. When we tabled it, we got all the way through to the end, and we had gone through the evidence part, public comment part, and then we got to basically decision making. And if you recall, a bunch of discussion around sidewalks at that point in time.
Right. Well, that's what my question is regarding, the sidewalk.
Well, hopefully those will be answered for you. But we can't really get into that outside of anything tonight, other than during the evidentiary portion, which has already been basically asked and answered at this point in time. So we get stuck with this stuff. We don't make it up ourselves.
Well, I fully understand. But at the same point, it ain't fair.
Right. Right. Well, hopefully your questions get answered. And if not, the board may have some follow-up questions for the design crew or our county staff, and maybe that will elicit the responses that you'd like to hear.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for coming out this evening. All right.
I did sign up for a public comment.
Okay.
On PB 23, Act 24.
That's a evidentiary, oh, no, it's not. Yes, on the pawn shop. Yes, that's a, that also is a special use permit. So for that, we will have a public hearing and consider evidence and public comment at that time when we get into that agenda item itself.
For that tax amendment?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I think the gentleman was asking about a text amendment, which there is not a text amendment on tonight's agenda.
Are you talking about the pawn shop?
Yeah.
Come on up to the lecture, and let's have a chat here for a minute.
There's not a text amendment.
So if you would, just state your name for the address for us and for the record.
Sir, Steve Hedrick, 296 Summit Farms. What I wanted to speak on was, I ran across the text amendment that's currently at the TRC that was submitted by the Board of Commission to amend the UDO Chapter 2.
Okay.
Remove the public comment from order of proceedings for the evidentiary hearing. That's what I wanted to spend about three minutes on.
That would be appropriate to discuss because it's not before the board for a decision tonight. So continue, please.
Thank you, sir. Going through the run across this, going through it, looking at what our permits are in the county, says effective June 7th of '21, I'm just parroting the UDO, okay? Valid use permits and conditionals shall now become special use. So it appears to me that special use permits, I'm looking at table of the reviewed procedure, Table 2.1, special use permit is a decision with public comment. Now, of course, Table 2.6.3.a, I don't have my glasses on. Special use permit is actually, you know, an evidentiary hearing. So as I was going through the UDO the last few days, the procedure for special use permit does say community meeting. Now, when we move over to the procedure, it says the word "if" a community meeting is held doesn't necessarily say "shall." So if one is held, then the posted notice would be out on the land, or mailed notices to property owners. I know that at least one property owner was mailed a notice for the Lotus Ridge application, but I did not recall seeing any community signs for that. And obviously, if there is a community meeting, then, you know, one of the Currituck County staff members would be there just to represent the county and not be a facilitator or anything else. But it does say, public comments shall be heard as part of the proceedings. So I understand that, you know, you do exclude some testimony if you find it to be, as I'm parroting this, irrelevant, immaterial, or unduly repetitious. So my question would be, before the board, how are your constituents of the county or constituents, how are we to be able to express our concerns on special use permits that encompass, you know, type 1, type 2 plats when developers come before you to build, you know, to build homes? When does the public weigh in on that? If they don't do the community meeting, if they merely mail notices to those who are in 500 feet of the property lines, what about the rest of the folks in the county? Those who live along the roads that are now going to be heavily traveled, more heavily traveled than they were, and concern, obviously, you know, for county services, so on, so forth. Curious, if this does, if this does get voted on in the past, at what point will the public have any say-so on any kind of development on our county? You know, we live in a great county. I don't have any problems with it. But I'd just like to know where the constituents are going to be. We always talk about transparency and how we want to be transparent to the public. I'm not really sure if this is, being very transparent, I think it may give the impression, either real or perceived, and unfortunately, in today's world, perception is reality. If they perceive that you're, as our great Board of Commissioners are sliding things through, covering things up, and the public has no say-so on any of it, I think it's just not going to be a good look. Personal opinion. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening.
So we normally don't engage, but I'll take a minute. You brought up an excellent point. We have worked, we spent a lot of time on this recently to try and sort this out. So the public comment really isn't what it's about. It's an evidentiary hearing, and it's not about personal thoughts, feelings, or otherwise. It's about testimony. And maybe the county attorney will jump in if I misspeak. But there was a misperception that it's public comment, and it's not. It's not open for public comment or debate. The public has a right to put on a case against it, if you're against it, the developer. And the way, though, the laws are, are fairly heavily weighted towards the developer in this case, most special use or use permit of any kind, because they're going to have the money to bring in attorneys, to bring appraisers in, to have expert testimony, and to prove their case. Now, we don't always have to accept that. If we feel that there's some error made by one of the experts, then we can delve into that further. But one of the things we're trying to do when we work through this is to help this public better understand their position and how they can be involved in the process. But one of the problems is the notion of public comment, that people come up here and think that, they think that traffic's going to be a problem, but they don't know that traffic's going to be a problem, those kind of things. So it is misleading to the public, and we get saddled with this because of stuff that comes out of Raleigh, or lawsuits ensue from developers, and they end up winning because they have the money to do so. So unfortunately, we get saddled with it, and then we look bad. And we have debated this a lot. We've had people coming for us for public comment, and we can't hear what they, you know, we're constantly having to shut them down because they're talking about their feelings, not about things that they actually know, or have firsthand knowledge of. That would be different, you know, if I saw this happen. You have firsthand knowledge of it, right? So that is a problem. It's an excellent point you bring up. And this is us trying to work through it, basically.
But, Mr. Chairman, to that end, I think that that's a question a lot of people have. It's, okay, so how do they voice their opinion and have anybody hear it? Kevin, can you clarify when, because I thought community meetings were almost...
They're a requirement.
They're a requirement.
So it sounds like at a minimum, we have a UDO language issue that needs to get fixed if we have a "if."
It says "if."
Right, because there are applications where it's not required, depending on number of lots being created and things like that.
Okay.
Okay.
So like a exempt subdivision doesn't require, so that's the case in point. But things where we don't, things that are, in other words, there will be community meetings for the things that should have community meetings that is permissible to have.
Unless we're, when we're under capacity for schools, right now, like we're hearing a 10 lot.
That's where community meetings are required.
Right.
Yeah, the community meetings are required for zoning map amendments to establish a more intense-based zoning districts, conditional rezonings, plan development, special use permits, and type 2 preliminary plats of 50 lots or more, like Jenny was stating. So those do require community meetings.
And just if I may add too, for the public to be aware of, once this board is notified that a, this is coming, a special use is coming before the board, whether it's a two weeks or a month, as soon as we're notified this is coming before us, we can no longer entertain conversations, emails. We're not supposed to read them. We're not supposed to have any other dealings with the subject matter at that point. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, once it's submitted, and we're just before, coming before us, if
the public comes to us and wants to talk about us, we're not being rude, we just legally are not supposed to be doing that. We can't do that. So if somebody, I've had some people say, well, I want to talk to you about that, or send an email, I'd say, look, I can't read it. I can't take any letters. I can't discuss it because it can't really come before us.
And that's for quasi-judicial hearings, for evidentiary hearings, yes.
So I hope that muddles the water, makes it clear, wanted to, I don't know which, but...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
While we're still on this, there was a misconception on a Facebook post last week that said, why does the county hire these experts to come in and testify at these public hearings for the developers? And they are not hired by the county. The developer pays for that. That's totally at their expense. So I just wanted to clear that up.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we're working through it the best we can, and we're trying to clarify it for the public so that, like Commissioner Beaumont was saying, how they can become involved. And the public, so we do receive comments from the community meetings. We can read through those. They are submitted to us. The staff is there, and we can delve into that. And we have, in fact, like if Ms. Turner, Jenny, was at a meeting, we may ask her questions about the meeting because something wasn't clear, and what the developers and what submitting the notes, so.
And we can, in that effect, we have also grilled applicants based on the community meeting because of a concern that no one, listen, no one knows it all, right? And we're all open to, you know, being just humble enough to go, well, maybe we missed something. But we've grilled one or two, probably a lot more than that, applicants because of issues that were raised that we wanted answers for, because they were legitimate questions that needed legitimate answers. And sometimes, and I would suggest, we've actually had to table a meeting because of questions that were raised, right, during the community meeting, that the developer didn't have the answers for, and we weren't going any further until we had an answer. So that's, that's how we try to work it.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that very much. I was looking for a way to keep the public engaged.
No, we constantly do.
Raleigh's not interested in it.
No, no. And we've expanded...
They don't want us in it.
We've expanded the notification area. When I first came on the board, it was like 250 feet from a project. I mean, really. So we've expanded that to get people that are, you know, and depending on the project, maybe further out than that, like a sand mine, that's really going to be, you know, something else.
An expanded radius of notification would be, would be helpful instead of, you know, 250 feet from the property line.
One other thing, if there's a community meeting, the attendance is not limited to those that got the invite, right? And so if there's something that comes up, and I'll use the land, the borrow pit, right, that activity wasn't generated by who got the email or the mailer. That was generated by the community firing up going, we've got an issue here. And, you know, I don't know who was selling the pitchforks and the torches, but they retired after that. Legitimate, that's how, that's how the community gets hurt.
And they got it stopped before it even got here.
They did.
Right.
Because the developers said, we're not going any further. Got it. We're...
Right.
Mr. Chairman, one last thing.
Okay.
I'm the one that brought the community meeting idea forward several years ago and got it implemented. But the last one I attended turned into a gripe session. And we need to make sure that when people come in, that they're civil to one another, and don't try to talk over top of one another. That's not a true community meeting. That's not an exchange of ideas. And the public will keep that in mind, where the staff is there to hear what's said, and every now and then commissioners show up and want to hear what's being said.
Well, sir, I think they should be ran with some, they should be cordial to one another, but they all should be ran without emotion, with fact, and open to change, everyone involved. Just my thought.
Agree with you 100%.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Thanks for coming out tonight. Great points. Okay. Was there anyone else who wants to speak a public comment before I shut it down? Okay. Seeing no one, I will close public comment and move on to the commissioner report, which we've, it sounds like we probably got through half of it already. I'll kick it off to my right tonight with Commissioner Beaumont.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I attended Yak Stock 23. You know, I had concerns. I had, the thought was, I wanted to be there and see how it went, one way or the other. I wanted to see our county staff in action, you know, working with a, you know, a resident, a business owner, et cetera. And I got to tell you, and I'm going to give a great shout out to Tim, and if any put on, a shout out to our law enforcement, a shout out to our fire EMS. I don't know how having between 4,000 and 5,000 people go to the end of Eagle Creek, go to a function, and leave how it could have gone much better. But I will tell you, it was an amazing event to be at. The electricity, the energy that was there, it was just fantastic. It was a fantastic event. I was able to see, not only WTKR was there, Fox and Friends televised the whole section, or a whole episode Sunday morning. And it, I'll be honest, it made Currituck County look outstanding. I went around and tried to talk to people, especially waiting in line, and I didn't run into anybody from Currituck. I encountered folks from West Virginia that drove all the way here to go. There were people from Michigan that drove specifically to go to this concert. I spoke to people from Hampton, from Petersburg, from Richmond, from, you know, nobody from the South really did I run into, but a lot of folks south of Richmond, if you know the songs reference, that were just excited. Folks from Isle of Wight County are sick and tired of what's going on with their local government. She's, you know, she, she'd probably been there a little longer than I had, and she was ready to, she and her husband, to move to Currituck County because of basically our approach to life, right? And so it was a wonderful event. It was a wonderful event. And again, you know, Currituck County, you did a great job. Moyoc, you did an outstanding job. Eagle Creek, I'm sure there were moments, but what a great job. And I can't, I can't think of anything that we've had that's brought more publicity into this county to that light. I can't think of anything. And anyway, I was proud to be there. I was proud to be one of your commissioners, and it was a great time. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll back up what Paul said. I wasn't able to attend it, but I got to put in a plug I'd be remiss communications because they have to handle anything and everything that came through.
And Mary Beth. Sorry, I dropped those two.
I had the good fortune, along with several of you, to attend the ribbon cutting at both Moyoc Elementary and Moyoc Middle School. And I've got to tell you that I was greatly impressed with the buildings as the way they've been expanded. The citizens of Currituck can be very proud of those two additions to those buildings, and they should make for a good atmosphere for the children to learn in. On this past week, I attended the ribbon cutting for the Oak Trail Solar Farm and spoke to that. And I was kind of impressed with the standpoint that that solar farm will generate enough electricity for 17,000 homes. And people say, well, it doesn't benefit the ones here in Currituck County. Folks, it goes into the grid and provides power for our area. Verizon is the buyer of the credits wherever they need them. But the administration and the executive officers with Leland Renewable Energy that was there was greatly impressed with Currituck County. So Paul, it goes right along with what happened on Saturday. Our name's getting on the map. And I told the audience that was gathered there, Currituck is the gateway to the Outer Banks of North Carolina, and now Currituck is the gateway for Leland Renewable Energy in North Carolina. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Jarvis?
I also attended the ribbon cutting at Moyoc Middle School and Moyoc Elementary School. I agree with Owen. It's a beautiful project. And one thing that just impresses me with the projects is you have, especially a historic building like Moyoc Elementary School, and this is, this addition just seamlessly connects the historic with the new. And it's just a beautiful addition. And what a great space. One of the Assistant Superintendent, Renee Doughty, she commented that the restroom area there for the young girls and boys looked like something on HGTV. And it was just, it was just beautiful. And the parents and the students that were there were so excited. The cheerleaders at Moyoc Middle School, they were the light in the cafeteria. Just, they could not get their picture made there enough. So it is a beautiful addition to our county schools, and it's just one of those things that makes me really proud that we're able to take buildings that seem to be old, but we can reuse them and make them even better. And along that same line, school is starting in our area. College of the Album Roll classes started this past week, and there's more and more cars on the road for our growing population at COA. We're very excited about our fall enrollment at COA. The numbers tend to increase, have tended to increase since that Currituck campus opened, and we're very proud of that. And then, a week from today, school starts for our elementary, middle, and high school students. I would ask that you keep those students in your prayers. And as a teacher who started school 30 times, I ask that you keep the teachers in your prayers, too. It's always tough. I don't know if it's just me, but every year, when school got ready to begin, you'd have those nightmares about leaving your classroom and not knowing how to get back, and all of those scary things. So all of our teachers need prayers because they have our most precious cargo in their classroom every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kitty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On August 16th, at our social service meeting, direct...
On August the 16th, at our social service meeting, Director Samantha Hurd recognized two of Currituck's employees, Taylor Anderson and Saquika Walker, who work in the Child Protection Service Unit. During the last several months, it has been intense in terms of the number of cases that they have managed at social service. As child welfare professionals, they have worked hard to protect Currituck's most precious resource, our children. Their devotion towards the department's mission is inspiring to other employees and to the citizens of Currituck County. They have made a positive contribution to the dozens of families that they serve each week. Their commitment to protect our children deserves our recognition, and I would like to thank them on behalf of the county commissioners. We are grateful for their dedication and for making a difference in our county. Yes, we're certainly blessed with employees who make a difference, and we're grateful to have Ms. Anderson and Ms. Walker employed by our county. And on another note, a personal note, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Jarvis on becoming a grandmother, her first grandchild.
Right. Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pretty much commissioners covered everything, so I just have nothing else to add to that this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, sir. Well, for me, I'll be brief tonight. Currituck County has, we, the Board of Commissioners, have been working on new businesses, and how do we deal with them? We discussed having a business license. That ultimately did not happen, but we now have a new business info page on a county website, and we're working through a community calendar for all the businesses on the mainland. We've talked about that before, but I just wanted to touch on that. So, if you're thinking about coming to Currituck or thinking about opening a business, our county government is here to help. And there's a new, like I said, webpage on the planning and zoning page for new businesses that answers some questions, and we'll be here to help if you have questions and need answers. I too attended the new schools. Clearly, the kids liked it. The elementary school, they were running around everywhere, expecting every nook and crowny, and one of the kids said, "Man, this room is ginormous." He wanted to be on that side of the new school, not on the old school side. So, it was awesome to go there and see their reaction to their new school. You know, the tax money that we collect from you was put to good use to modify these schools, make them better than they are, and revamp them for a better education for our kids. And along those lines, the board has discussed working with DOT to decrease the speed limit on Tolles Creek near the new Tolles Creek Elementary site prior to the school being built. We'll be starting construction this fall on that, hopefully this fall, or sometime this early over the winter. And we're going to start knocking, get them to knock the speed down ahead of time so that people are used to slowing down instead of doing 65 through there in the morning on the way to work, as we'll have school buses coming and going and leaving in the afternoon. So, just be aware of that, that you'll see those signs pop up sometime in the near future on Tolles Creek. And that concludes it for me this evening. Mr. County Manager?
Mr. Chairman, just tagging on to your statement regarding the new webpage that has explanation of resources for new businesses and existing businesses in the county. Chief Building Inspector Bill Nunes, Development Services Director Kevin Kemp, and I met with Vice Chairman Jarvis this afternoon, talked about that issue some more, began to expound on some other ways that we can get the word out to the business community that we are open for business and how we might help facilitate their location and expansion here. And some of the things that we identified and will start working forward on initially are a development of a pamphlet that businesses can obtain from Development Services Department, explaining the different processes, steps, and things they should be aware of as they seek to locate a business or expand a business here, adding some additional information through the focus, our quarterly county newsletter. And then, we also contract with a local videographer to do different videos of, and different aspects of county government. I think one of the next ones is supposed to be about the Development Services Department and the work that they do, and so, we think that would be a good place to add as part of the video on the Development Services Department to add a component relative to what someone should do as they want to do business in Currituck County. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
No report.
Nothing? All right. It's our current theme, Megan. All right. Next up, public hearings. Item one, PB 21-21 Algonquin Subdivision. Joel and Stacy Justice are requesting a preliminary plat/special use permit for a 10-lot traditional subdivision located on Indian Kettle Road in Jarvisburg, Tax Map 109, Parcel 53F, and the Poplar Branch Township. With that, we have Kevin Kemp, our Development Services Director, to enlighten us.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. You probably remember this case. It came in front of you on April 3, 2023. If you'll remember, it was tabled. There was discussions about the sidewalk. There has been no new evidence presented with this resubmital, but I just will go over it briefly to remind you. The property is off Forbes Road. It's right next to Jarvisburg Elementary School. It is zoned SFM. The surrounding property is all ag with low-density residential and farmland, as well as the elementary school. Here is the site plan. This is the new site plan. It is almost identical to the other one. All the lots, 10 lots, minimum of 40,000 square feet. It is an extension of Indian Kettle Road. The only changes to it, the open space decreases very slightly, and that's because a buffer that was initially in the open space was moved into an easement on the lots, and I believe that is right along this property line. And the sidewalk, the applicant could provide more detail, but it was designed such so that it is on both sides of the new lots and then comes along the one side, as it was previously shown, of the four existing lots. The sidewalk does meet NCDOT standards and was designed such that it minimizes the impact on the lots. I know it was discussed about the trees, the great myrtle trees in great detail. Well, they will not be impacted with this design. So, with that, I will leave you with the review standards and-
Back up a couple to the, no, one. So, the, back one more.
Okay.
There you go. So, there's the red, the new lots or the old lots?
Yeah, sorry, they don't line up quite. Well, I, slide got moved a little, but they, yeah, the red lots are the lots. They're basically the same, almost identical. The minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet. They're a little larger along the cul-de-sac bulb. The only difference is right here where the buffer was shifted onto the lot. I apologize, I don't know what happened with that slide and translation.
Okay. Just making sure what we're seeing, so, because we don't get the red lines on our stuff, so it doesn't quite app to what was submitted to the board. Okay, so, in our previous, you said the sidewalk went down one side. I believe it was the west side of the proposed road. And did the road change as well from where it was before to now?
No, the road is in the same place. What was changed is the orientation, the location of the sidewalk, the ditch. They went out, they surveyed it, and they adjusted it such that the properties were less impacted, that there was, you know, there was a concern that they were going to lose those trees and their property. So, it was adjusted to still meet NCDOT standards while impacting the properties less.
And just a clarification, the sidewalk is on the east side, is it not?
Correct. It is on the east side of the street, the side closest to the elementary school.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Will the sidewalk go all the way out to Forbes Road? Because wasn't there discussion about it not going all the way out because of the property owners?
It will go all the way out to Forbes Road, yes.
And there's a pedestrian crosswalk where the second western side sidewalk ends, there's a pedestrian crossway, right?
Yes, yes. Because there are sidewalks on both sides of the new lots, someone coming down the western side would have that crosswalk to go over to the east side to then get to Forbes Road.
And I'm assuming signage would be on either side of that to alert people that there's a crosswalk?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Would this subdivision, this new part, would they, is there a requirement for a subdivision this small to have an HOA?
Yes.
And how would that impact the existing homeowners? The three houses that are already built in the vacant lot, how does that affect them if it does?
I think you could probably ask the applicant that. I'm not sure if they would be included in that HOA. I would like to say no, but I am not sure for certain.
Okay.
I can answer that. They were not put on notice, and there, I would assume, since this didn't exist at the time they purchased their property, so they would not be included in any kind of HOA unless they voluntarily consented to doing that.
Okay.
They would not.
Okay. Any further questions for, just go? All right. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Chairman.
Say one word?
No. Actually, not. Ms. Bissell, you here for, or applicant, excuse, sorry. Just looking at Mark, he's sitting up front. I got, we did not talk to each other, by the way, about our ties tonight, just so the public is aware.
I apologize for sitting behind the tallest person.
That's okay.
The shortest person sitting behind the tallest person in the room. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Ben Gallup. I'm an attorney. I represent Joel and Stacy Justice, who are back in the back, and we've got Mr. Bissell, who did the plan here, and Mr. Tate, who is the appraiser who testified before. I don't think that either one of them would change either of their opinions that they provided before, so I would agree with Ms. Morgan that it's with the board to make a decision and that we believe we've presented evidence to make the case that we've met the standards for the special use permit.
Is it the intention of the developer to turn the street over to NCDOT with them meeting NCDOT standards? Is that the intention?
I believe so. Yes.
Okay. All right. Any questions with Mark or any experts? Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, sir. All right. As I said, this is kind of a screwball thing for us. It's not our norm. We have done the evidentiary part of this. We have closed public comment. We have had the evidence presented to us in all that matters for the most part, as far as harming property and the four findings of fact that we have to meet as a Board of Commissioners. So, if there's no further questions from either side, then we'll open the floor to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I will move to approve PB 21-21 Algonquin Subdivision Preliminary Plat/Special Use Permit because the applicant has demonstrated the proposed use meets the review standards of the UDO. The use will not endanger the public health or safety. There'll be sidewalks, there'll be infrastructure, stormwater. The use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be harmony, be in harmony with the area in which it's located. We had experts testify to the fact that real estate values will not be impacted. The use will be in conformity with the Imagine 2040 Vision Plan or other officially adopted plans, specifically, let me get to that page, land use goal one, land use policy 1.3, transportation policy 2.1, parks and rec policy 2.1, lower Currituck land use policy one, Jarvisburg sub-area policy 5.1, Jarvisburg sub-area policy 5.2, and the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. The development is in Jarvisburg Elementary School and Currituck Middle School attendance area where capacity is available. Both Currituck County High School and JP Nap Early College have actual capacity to serve additional students generated by this development.
One second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Here it goes unanimously. Our next item is PB 87-19 Buck Island PUD, Galosa Holdings. As I previously said, I'll have to recuse myself and ask the board for a motion to allow me to recuse myself.
Suck it. That was quick.
On it. All right. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Just trying to get rid of you quicker.
Yep. You know what? Year and a half. Okay.
Right out of your hair.
Yep.
You gave that to me.
I did. I was trying to think there was something else that you needed. Some of these people may have signed up.
Okay. Is that this one?
I think it is. That's Mark Thompson.
Okay. All right. I'll put that one. So, that would be in with this one. Okay.
All right. I'll get out of your hair.
All right. Ask for some grace. This is very new to me, so I'll do my best not to make a mess of this. First thing we need to do is swear in our participants. If you're going to give testimony, if you'll come to the front. If you'll grab a Bible, raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony that you'll give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, help you, God?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And we will hear from Ms. Turner, right?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. I guess I could have let them out, but. Did you read the description here of the public hearing?
I did not. I guess I need to do that.
You could do it, or I can do it. Either way.
I'll do it. Just give me a second to get to that page. We are at item two, PB 87-19 Buck Island PUD, Galosa Holdings LLC is A, requesting an amended sketch plan, special use permit to add two dwelling units, density to parcel Y in Buck Island, 10 Buck 2, and B, requesting a preliminary plat/special use permit for creation of parcel Y. The property is located at 804 Ocean Trail, Tax Map 116D, Parcel 3B, Poplar Branch Beach Township.
Thank you. So, the property is located here. You can see in the center of the PowerPoint, the turquoise parcel that's highlighted there, it is to the, let's see if the mouse, oh, right here. So, the property's located just north of 10 Buck 2 in Corolla and west of the Monterey Plaza Shopping Center. It's between the Seaside Farm Market and the Corolla Venture Golf and Bumper Cars properties. So, seaside being here, Corolla Venture Golf here. The site is 0.44 acres. It's the, this trapezoidal parcel that was created when the Mid-Currituck Bridge, DOT initially chose this parcel and acquired it, and it basically created this parcel. The parcel's part of the Buck Island PUD and subject to the sketch plan of Buck Island. Previously, if you've been in Corolla, you may notice, you may have noticed there was a coffee kiosk on the property, but that's been removed. Again, it's zoned SFO with PUD overlay, subject to the Buck Island sketch plan. So, the request, as you read, it's really going to require two actions by the board tonight. The first is to amend the sketch plan, special use permit to approve those two additional units of density that's being requested. The project that's being proposed is a commercial development with retail on the first floor of the building and two upper-story dwelling units. The second decision the board will need to make tonight is on the preliminary plat/special use permit. In researching this particular parcel, it was determined that the lot was never created legally to establish the lot as a legal lot of record. It was showed on the sketch plan, but showing a lot on the sketch plan does not create a lot. So, that's what the other request before you tonight is to make the lot legal. You can see here, this is actually Buck Island, and I'll kind of show you the area that's part of Buck Island here, 10 Buck 2 Shopping Center. And then, on the east side, you can see there's the Charleston Place, as well as the single-family dwellings in the ocean on this side. So, in the sketch plan currently, the density is 121 dwelling units at 1.765 units per acre. The ordinance allows up to three dwelling units per acre in a planned unit development. So, this request of- So this request of two additional units, uh, uh, meets that minimum provision of the ordinance, uh, 1.795 units per acre. I also showed here a commercial allocation and open space. Uh, there are no changes to either of those, uh, those parcels or, or numbers at this time. The parcel is designated as commercial. The applicant did provide a conceptual plan to show their proposed, um, project. On the plan, the building does meet required setbacks of the lot. Uh, the site meets the minimum or the maximum lot coverage of 65%. Uh, they are showing nine parking spaces. Based on a little over 2,000 square feet of retail on the ground floor and two dwelling units on the upper story, eight parking spaces are required per the UDO, so they do have an additional parking space. They are showing an area for stormwater retention. Uh, and then DOT through review of, uh, our preliminary review, um, made a comment that the entrance on NC 12 should be right in and right out. Also that, yes.
Um, I'm sorry, can you go back to slide?
Yes. Do you want to ask about the commercial?
I was going to ask about the dwelling. Okay, so the proposed, we're looking at the site Y, correct, or plat or?
For the PUD.
Parcel Y.
Correct.
So my question is, it's .44 acres?
The lot is .44 acres, yes.
With two dwelling units?
Right, so we're looking at the PUD. So the, the PUD standards are, are, yeah, so it's for the whole PUD. So the parcel, and I think it's in your, um, staff report, I think it's 4.95 on the actual parcel.
Got it.
Would be the density of the parcel itself. Let's see here. 4.5 units per acre. And all, on this conceptual site plan, all of this will be subject to major site plan review. So, um, that would be a next step for the applicant if the, these use permits are approved. They also submitted a preliminary building design for the retail. Um, in your packet, on page 25 of the packet, there are also other elevations of the proposed building. Um, that, that again will be reviewed at major site plan to make sure the building meets the minimum, uh, non-residential design standards of the ordinance. So those are kind of related, mostly related to the amended sketch plan, two units of density requests, the, the conceptual plan, as well as the building design. Then, uh, to speak to the preliminary plat request. So the preliminary plat, as I mentioned, the special use permit preliminary plat is to make the lot a legal lot of record that a building permit can be issued for. And in a PUD, the minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet on Central Sewer, which this lot is on, um, private sewer. It's served by Carolina Water. It's also served by County Water. It meets the minimum lot size requirement. It also meets the minimum lot width requirement in a PUD, which is 65 feet. The lot is over 275 feet on Alona, NC 12. The TRC did review the request and have provided these comments that are also in your agenda packet on page 18, that the applications are in conformance with the UDO, that the driveway on NC 12 shall be restricted to right in, right out, and a major site plan shall be approved prior to commencement of development on the site. The Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan designates the site as G3, which is mixed-use corridors in the Corolla sub-area. And there are some, um, goals and policies of the plan that, that may apply, that the board may want to consider related to these requests. Those are also found in your agenda packet. Land use goal number one, to encourage development to occur at densities appropriate, appropriate for their location. Policy 1.3 to consider community character and vision. 2.1 coordinate site design with nearby businesses. Uh, transportation policy 2.1, um, provides for pedestrian walkways, as well as parks and rec policy 2.1. Uh, general Corolla land use policy is to minimize commercial strip development. And Corolla G3 and G2, uh, as well, um, transect policies, uh, to concentrate commercial development in existing nodes. And that existing PUDs, um, should continue to develop according to the master plan for the PUD. And as you are used to seeing, these are the four, uh, special use permit review standards that the applicant will need to provide evidence, um, that they meet these standards for the board to make decisions on these two requests before you this, this evening. Are there any questions for me?
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I'll now call up the applicant and his representative.
Uh, my name is Cryl Scray. I'm the attorney for the applicant, and I would like the privilege of asking this young lady a few questions, if I might.
Ms. Turner?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Uh, I understand the board probably already knows some of these answers to some of these questions, but all I'm doing, trying to do is establish something. Uh, Ms. Turner, would you provide a little bit on your education?
Sure. Uh, received a bachelor's degree from North Carolina State University in Business Management.
And you've been employed by Currituck County approximately how long?
14 years.
And what have you been doing for Currituck County?
I had, uh, started as a code enforcement and came off, uh, local current officer. And then, um, was planner one, then planner two, and now senior planner.
And as a, I apologize, interrupted you. As a planner, did you work with and have to read the Currituck County UDO, Uniform Development?
Yes.
Yes. And you're familiar with it?
Yes.
I would ask that she be held to be an expert in your Currituck County Uniform Development Ordinance.
Any objections? Okay, thank you.
All right. As you set forth in your original presentation, this is actually for two different requests. I want to take the second one first, which is to make this a legal lot. And as I understand this, is it not correct that this chunk of land was created when DOT came in and took that Y on either side of it?
That's right.
Or the bridge as an entranceway? And suddenly they left out this chunk of land? Is that correct?
Correct.
And it never went through the appropriate requirements of the county for it to be a legal lot? And if it's not a legal lot, then the county has the right not to issue building permits on it?
Correct.
Is that also correct?
Yes.
All right. The second part is, is that this is part of a PUD. Also correct?
Correct.
And asking for additional density on this particular piece goes toward the density of the entire PUD.
Correct.
And if you look at the entire PUD, that's that 1.7 number that you gave to the Commissioners, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, ma'am. In your professional expert opinion, um, would the finding that this creates or finding that this is a legal lot, would that in fact endanger the public health and safety or not?
I'm, I'm not qualified to testify to that.
All right. Uh, do you think that it would be in conformity, if it's made into a legal lot, would be in conformity with the land use plan?
I believe that it would.
And to the best of your knowledge, would this mean, would this cause creating a legal lot, anything that would exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public services?
I'm not sure.
Okay. All right, I'll switch to the other part of this. If two density units are added, which is the other part of what this is for these Commissioners for, in doing that, would it endanger the public health or safety?
I can't speak to that.
Would it be in conformity with the land use plan?
Um, I believe so.
All right. And would adding of those two units cause this PUD to exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities?
Again, I'm not sure.
That's all I have for.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Turner. Do we have anybody else for the applicant?
Oh, yes. If we might.
It's your honor, your honor.
All right.
Need to qualify.
Yeah.
Good evening. I'm John Delucia from Almarl Associates.
Excuse me, first of all, um, sir, you will need to qualify him as an expert.
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Okay.
And I'm representing IG Holdings as their engineer tonight.
Would you give them a little bit about your education, sir?
I have a degree in civil engineering from, uh, Dunston State University. I have been working as a professional engineer here in North Carolina for the last 35 years. I graduated in 85 from college, and I started working here three days later. And I love working in Currituck and on the Outer Banks. And, um, I am a registered professional engineer in the state.
Do you have an approximation of how many projects you may actually have done in Currituck County in the last 20 years or so?
Sir, I can't go a quarter mile in any direction and not see something I haven't worked on in Currituck County.
And when you worked on those projects in Currituck County, did you in fact review the Currituck County Uniform Development Ordinance?
Absolutely.
And therefore you're familiar with the same?
Yes, sir.
All right. I would tend to him as an expert in engineering and site plans for the site plan requirements in Currituck County.
Any objections? Okay. You may proceed.
Would you please advise the Commissioners? You in fact, uh, presented or were involved in making this application, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you reviewed this application?
Yes, sir.
For it being submitted to the Commissioners? Is that also correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, now. Based on your knowledge of the Currituck County UDO, do you find that this, I'm breaking into components again. One, creating a legal lot out of this particular property, would that endanger the public health or safety in your professional opinion?
It would not.
Would creating this as a legal lot be in conformity with the land use plan?
Yes.
And to the best of your knowledge, would creating this as a lot exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities?
No, sir. And we have documentation from, uh, Carolina Water and the County Water to that effect.
I didn't hear that. Could you repeat that, please?
I said, we have, the, the site was already developed with a coffee shop at one time. There's currently a water tap onto the site, and there's currently a sewer tap, if you look onto the site. Um, we received notification from Carolina Water, Carolina Utilities, that they have adequate, uh, capacity to service. The, uh, retail won't require much wastewater or water at all, and neither will the two small apartments.
The second part of this being two small apartments, if in fact the Commissioners were to approve that, would that endanger the public health or safety in your professional opinion?
I do not think it would, and it's consistent with, uh, some of the UDO provisions to provide workforce housing above retail space.
And if the Commissioners were to approve the?
Uh, excuse me, I'm getting interrupted real quick. So you qualified him as an expert witness as an engineer, correct?
No, sir. I asked that he be qualified as a expert in the Currituck County UDO and the development standards required in Currituck County.
Okay. So now he's testifying on public safety, which I'm trying to figure out how that ties into the UDO.
That was going to be my question.
In other words, what qualifies you to speak to public safety?
As a professional engineer, it's my charge to protect the public.
In design standards, I, I mean, I'm, I'm just an aerospace engineer. I'm not a public, you know? But I'm just nowhere in what you've qualified his skills at are applicable right now to what we're talking about for public safety.
Maybe just focus on public health and what area he's in.
Do you see what I'm saying?
I understand your, your point.
You qualified him as this, and now he's testifying that, that it's not going to endanger health? And I'm trying to figure out how we made that kind of connection.
The connection that I'm trying to make, and I apologize, I'm not doing a very good job of it, is that when a design professional puts together design, uh, and again, we have two different components here. The first is, we're not giving you a plan right now. That's not what this is about. This is either A, is, will you vote to make this a legal lot or not?
And I think we understand the scope of that. I think Commissioner Beaumont's concern is your, your expert has not qualified, in our minds, as an expert on public safety.
Here's my concern with your statement, ma'am. And, and I'm not disagreeing with you, okay? Either one of you. I really am not. But the special use, for use standards, a special use permit shall be approved on a finding that the applicant demonstrate that the proposed use will. And the problem I've got is, we're talking about two different components. One is making it a lot.
We get that.
That's not a use. That's just, okay.
So he's going to testify on a lot, I got it.
Okay.
So you're bringing someone else to talk about public safety from the use. I understand that, thank you.
Well, let me just finish this thought, if I might, sir. The second part is adding two residences. Now, that is an area that a design standards person is dealing with. When you design a subdivision, you design a multifamily, part of what you're doing, well, let me ask him. Part of when you do that, are you not designing to determine a ways to make that design safe for the people who will be using it?
Absolutely.
And that's the point I was trying to get to, sir.
Okay, well, then my question would be then, could you expand a little bit more to help me understand how you would design it in the public's health and the safety? How, how, how something like this is designed to protect the public's safety and the health? What goes into that design? Or what, how do you design that, I guess?
We look at, we look at things like, um, well, with the DOT wanting the right hand in and the right hand out laying openly. We look at that as a, as a safety concern. And, and agree with, with that type of design. We look at where the stormwater goes and meeting your ordinances and making sure that it doesn't cause flooding, and it doesn't cause adverse conditions on the streets, and it doesn't cause adverse conditions on the sidewalk. We look at making sure that the, the facility has proper, um, accommodations for their septic, has proper accommodations for their water. We make sure that the site parking lot drains so that it's not, um, doesn't affect anybody during a rainstorm. So we look at, we look at safety aspects. We look at curb and gutter. We look at, um, bollards. We look at putting a bicycle rack in so it doesn't get run over by a car coming in. We look at how a trash, um, truck needs to come in and service it. So we are looking at all of those aspects when we're looking at the design of a, of a commercial.
So, so then you do have data from, uh, transportation data from DOT or something that can justify the, when you said you used that data to make your safety decision? So you have that data available?
We had discussions with DOT about how best to access this lot. It's currently a driveway onto this lot. And their concern was because of the distance to the traffic light, we would, uh, be better off having it right in than right out. We've done that multiple times on projects, both here in Currituck and down in Derrick County.
So I'm going to help. Specifically, when you're talking typically what goes on here, right? When it talks about public safety, certainly traffic studies are a piece of it, right? We're not talking about building code because that's covered in a completely different department. And trust me, you're not going to, if it's not up to code, you're, it's not going to get approved.
That's right. That's right.
This is specific, you know, schools, fire and rescue, law enforcement and other county facilities, right? Which we've not talked about at all, right? And it's gonna be nominal, it would be notional. It's gonna be, you know, this is not gonna add additional burden type thing, but I'm not gonna testify for you. But somebody needs to be qualified in order to be able to speak to that. And right now, you've qualified him as an engineer, but not as an expert on law enforcement or this, all of that. Does that, does that make sense? Does that help?
I understand what you said, sir.
Good.
And you're right, he is not an expert on law enforcement or fire protection, anything of that nature. What he is an expert in is designing developments. And my problem that I've had throughout trying to deal with how to bring you the evidence is the evidence is, I can't tell you what the use is gonna be. Your audit says the proposed use will not do these things. Well, the first part is, is it a lot or not? Okay, but let's put that aside, because I don't want that to vary in all the candor. But the second part of it is the issue of we're adding two residential units. Or we're asking you to do that. That's up to you to approve or not approve. That's a use. I'll agree with that. And we have a burden of demonstrating that. And I'll be candid with you, I can't figure out how to do it.
So, somebody who's in construction, who's been an engineer on all kinds of projects, right? He's done, can't go a quarter mile in any direction from here except east. Because it's gonna be wet, right? So him stating that two residential units is not gonna appreciably increase demands for fire for law enforcement. For example, if he were to say something like that, then, okay, he's an engineer. He oughta know that relationally, proportionally, incrementally...
I'm surprised Deb didn't jump down my throat.
Well, let me, let me just ask, so you're, he is your expert witness on the first design substant, the first review standard, not endangering the public health or safety? And he is also testifying as an expert to three, that it's in conformity with the land use plan? And four, that it's not gonna exceed the county's ability? Is that what you're telling us? That he is testifying and giving expert testimony in all of those three areas?
No, ma'am, not the last one.
So just the first and third one?
First two.
Okay, that's, I think that clears it up.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me sit down and shut up.
My bad.
No, sir? You have every right to ask any question to make sure that I'm making things clear to the score. That's all the questions I have.
Do you have other witnesses?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead and call them then.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jason Self. How are you doing?
Great. How about you?
Doing okay.
Awesome.
Jason, please provide your full name.
My name is Jason Ruffin Self.
And please provide to the board what your educational background is.
I have a degree in international business from University of North Carolina Wilmington.
And are you licensed in any way?
I'm a North Carolina State Certified Residential Real Estate Appraiser. I am a real estate broker. And I have instructor credentials with the North Carolina Real Estate Commission.
Did you prepare a letter dated August 21, 2023, rendering an opinion concerning how this development is developing? Not creating a lot, but this development may impact adjoining property values?
I did.
I just got this, so may I pass this to the board?
Just hand it to our clerk, please. Thank you.
And let me just ask you to reiterate one item, please.
Yes, sir.
Do you have an opinion satisfactory to yourself whether A, creating this lie as a lot, or B, adding two residential units would injure the value of adjoining property lands and would be in harmony with the area in which it is located?
I do have an opinion on that, sir.
And please advise the board what your opinion is.
In my opinion, the creation of this lot or the development as per the proposed, the mixed-use unit will not have a negative impact on the property values of any of the adjoining, abutting or properties in close proximity.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Self?
And can you elaborate on at least some of your data points as to how you arrived at that expert opinion?
First, I'll look at what's around the property. The majority of the properties surrounding this are, you know, commercial usage. And then I'll look at what's proposed. And a mixed-use property is one of the, you know, lower levels of property that's not gonna, when it comes to injuring nearby property values. It would be a little different if this was in the middle of a subdivision full of houses and you wanted to put in a mixed-use with retail and residential. Then there may be some injury to property values. When you're surrounded by mixed-use and commercial properties, a mixed-use with retail and residential is generally not gonna have much of an effect on property values. What would have more of an effect on the surrounding property values would actually be the bridge itself. But that's not what we're here for. So in my research, I located several mixed-use properties. I looked at the properties surrounding that and then looked for when some of those properties last sold. And then I started looking for comparables to that sale during that time period and tried to figure out if there was any injury to those properties being near a mixed-use property. And I couldn't find any, anything that really told me there would be any injury to nearby properties.
Do you have like a summary of the 23 data points?
I do.
Do you have copies for us?
I do not. I'll be glad to pass this around. It's kinda written in shorthand, or I could, I could give you a quick rundown on some of them, if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like to hear some comparisons of properties that you actually looked at compared to something like this.
Okay. To start with, I went through the Outer Banks Board of Realtors MLS system and I actually looked through almost all of the sales listed in the commercial section and looked for properties that were considered to be mixed-use. And that's generally gonna be retail with residential. I located a few that I think were important. One, and a lot of these are located in Kill Devil Hills and Kitty Hawk, because that's, there's not a whole lot of mixed-use properties out there. So I have to look for what I feel is appropriate. First one I found...
Have any in Corolla?
I did not find, I found a couple of mixed-use properties in Corolla, but none that I thought were appropriate, because those surrounding properties were either mixed-use or there just were no appropriate sales that I could extract anything from. So...
And you said you had some specific sites you could list that you looked at?
Yes, specific mixed-use properties and the surrounding sales. One of them is 100 East Helga Street. This one used to be a, it was a bathing suit store. I believe now it's currently a coffee shop. At the time of the sale, it was mixed-use with the bathing suit store downstairs and residential upstairs. The property beside it is 102 East Helga Street. During that time period, I found three sales which supported that sale price. Did not demonstrate any injury to that property for being directly next door to a mixed-use property. I have my next sale, which is 103 East Clark Street, which is a mixed-use property and is actually currently where my office is. I found a sale that is right across the street from that. That sold, when that property sold, there were several sales that were very supportive of that sale price. Did not indicate there was any injury to that property's market value due to being proximate to a mixed-use property. 301 Driftwood, that's a mixed-use property. It is, again, retail on the ground level, had residential upstairs. The property that is next door to it is 305 East Driftwood Street. When that property sold, there was no injury to that property due to its proximity to a mixed-use. There's also 300 East Gallery Row, which is also next to the same property. And again, comps during that time period did not indicate any injury to that property for being proximate to a mixed-use property.
So what do you have that was from Corolla?
I don't have anything from Corolla, unfortunately. There's not a lot of...
Are you saying that because there's no mixed-use in Corolla, that an adjacent property is sold? Is that why you don't have that as evidence?
I found one mixed-use property in Corolla, and I believe that one is in very close proximity to the subject property. But that is in the shopping center that's directly to the south of that. And I, there's not enough data for me to find any correlation.
Okay.
And just to be clear, all of these properties are within the Outer Banks marketing area, whether they're in the specific neighborhood or not. I do feel they are similar enough to the subject area that I can draw that conclusion.
We think we're special to see.
Well, absolutely.
Because we are.
Yeah, I agree with that.
We're all in agreement.
Anyone else have any questions? No other questions for him?
Right, thank you.
The only other evidence that I have to submit to you is, I had asked your planning department and your assistant planning director was kind of to send to me information concerning your 2023 enrollment in your school and what existing available school capacity you have. And when she provided that to me, it indicates that your Kurutuck County High School has adequate capacity. Middle School, Kurutuck Middle School, has the capacity. To be honest, I couldn't tell where you send your elementary school people that are in Corolla. And I live in Kurutuck, and I couldn't figure it out. So I could not tell from the data that she sent to me whether there was adequate capacity for elementary school. I'll be just upfront on this. Where do you send them?
Dare County mostly.
Was it, is it Kitty Hawk Elementary?
Probably Kitty Hawk.
Mm-hmm. That's where they go.
Or the Corolla School. I guess there's private options, so.
The charter school is one option and then...
Yeah. Do you have any other witnesses?
Other than presenting to you the data from your own report concerning schools and their capacity, no, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions for...
Done with your testimony?
That will be the only.
Okay, well, I didn't...
Okay, so, thank you, and we'll open public comment now.
I got some questions, I'm sorry for that.
Oh, you have questions?
I'm sorry, yes, I do.
I thought I asked that, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I guess the, as far as the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide public facilities, have you investigated, you said you checked in or somebody testified about the water supply and the connections?
That's in the packet.
Yeah.
That's okay, so you, okay, that. Again, we're talking about the schools, okay? Okay, well, those are, yeah, those are the main items, okay.
All right.
Yes, the package does indicate that water and sewer are adequate.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna now open up the public hearing. The first person I have signed up is Manny Galasa.
Please, please, one of the others, ma'am.
Do you wanna speak?
No, okay.
Okay, you signed up, that's why I ask. And then I have Mark Thompson. Okay, all right. Is there anybody who didn't sign up that would like to speak? Okay, Mr. Memes, come on up. State your name and address for the record, please.
James Memes, 105 Chestnut Drive. So I just have some concerns. So at the, at the start of this, before this, became before the board, it was just discussed that developers weren't gonna be using planning staff or any type of staffing for expert testimony. Or that the, that taxpayers weren't paying for that expert testimony. What we just saw today was a applicant with his attorney try to swear in a, a person from public staff as expert testimony. I find that very concerning. And then after that, you saw the next expert testimony personnel come up here and say that he wanted to address the, the fact that his person was an expert in the UDO. What makes him an expert in the UDO? Then you, Mr. Beaumont, clarified and asked him what specifically he was testifying about, and then he decides to say he's an engineer. So which is it? Is he an expert as an engineer? Or is he an expert in UDO studies? I think there needs to be a look into that. Thank you, that's all.
So, real quick, let me, you can be both, right? You can be an engineer who's an expert in the UDO.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
And then as far as Jenny's already sworn in when she testifies, and at all times, the applicant's counsel has the opportunity to query county staff who are under oath. That's just, I appreciate what you were saying about using county staff as their expert witness. And certainly, that's kind of the way that went down. But he could have asked those questions without qualifying her as an expert witness, because by the virtue of her being up there, she is an expert witness on the county side.
I just wanna be careful about how they're tenuring their experts.
Got it.
He's saying that he's a UDO expert, then you have to clarify that he's an engineer. And then his next person comes up and doesn't even have any studies for Corolla or adjacent properties. I think that's very concerning.
Thanks, James.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, I will close public comment.
Ms. Vice Chair, I'd like to request a recess for five minutes, please, or 10.
10 minutes? All right, we'll do a 10-minute recess. Okay, I guess I, that's my gap. In light of the gaps in evidence presented, I'm gonna ask for a motion to table this, excuse me, to continue the evidentiary hearing until 6:00, thereabouts, on September 5th at our next meeting. May I get a motion to continue this to the next?
Ms. Vice Chair, are you, are you asking to have both items tabled?
Yes, both. Both PB 8719 A and B.
Okay, I'll second that.
I'll move that.
Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item is continued until the 5th of September.
Let's be clear that the evidentiary hearing is still be open.
That's right, it's continued until September 5th.
And the public comment, we did close. It's just the evidentiary...
It's just the evidentiary hearing that is still open. Public comment is closed.
And my suggestion would be to get with county staff.
Okay. And now I will turn it back over to our very much more capable chairman.
You can answer his phone.
I'm probably, probably in trouble.
Right?
Nah, it's just technical. Well, that was, that was different. An entertaining audience watching how we work, so, by the way, did I close up? All right. Next up then, we have PB 87-56 Monterey Shores PUD. CB Land Development LLC is A, requesting an amended sketch plan, special use permit to correct summary data table and reduce the open space for Monterey Shores PUD Phase III, Corolla Bay. And B, requesting a special use permit for 127 multifamily units in Phase III, Corolla Bay. This property is located in northeast intersection of Ocean Trail and Herring Street and includes the following, well, I'm not gonna read all those numbers. So, we'll be moving on to Director Kevin Kimpton this evening, and we have to, since this is an evidentiary hearing, again, swear in anybody who will be coming forward to testify this evening. Jenny, will you be presenting this as well this evening?
No, I'm just gonna swear in just in case.
Okay, just in case. All right. Do you all solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give, with the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. All right. Yeah. All right, good evening, Mr. Kemp.
Thank you, Chairman. As you read, this item actually has two actions that will be required of the board. The first is an amended sketch plan SUP to reduce the open space for Phase Three by one point four five five acres. And then the second is a special use permit only for the multifamily portion of the project. So the subject parcels are a large undeveloped portion of the Monterey Shores PUD. To orient you a little more, it is just north of the Corolla Bay Patio Housing Development. The Whalehead Development is adjacent to the east side and to the west side. There's some county-owned parcels, the new ABC store, to be specific. Property is zoned SFO with a PUD overlay, as is the surrounding properties, with the exception of Whalehead, which is just SFO. This request is for a mixed-use development with a multifamily component. The development includes a hotel with one hundred and seventy-two rooms, mixed-use buildings with commercial on the first floor and multifamily units above, and a multifamily dwelling component. There are a hundred and twenty-seven total dwelling units proposed with this project. As I said, there are two, two things the board needs to consider, I won't read those again. Here is a rendered version of the site plan. I will give more detail in a couple slides, but the development really seeks to do a Main Street feel down the middle of the development, here between the hotel and the mixed-use portion. The multifamily portion is to the north of the site. You can see there are vegetated buffers both along the main highway and adjacent to Whalehead. Here is a rendering of that Main Street feel that they're trying to get. In this image, the hotel would be to the right, the mixed-use to the left with commercial on the floor, ground floor, residential over top, and then at the end of the street there, you see the multifamily component. Here is a more detailed site plan. You can see the hotel, it's a U-shaped hotel, has a recreation area in the middle, including a pool and other outdoor areas. The mixed-use runs adjacent to the highway, and then the multifamily, this shows four buildings with, again, a recreational outdoor area in between. There are two access points to the site, one from Ocean Trail NC twelve and one from Herring Street. There is an existing curb cut out on Herring Street, which will be moved, and there is a existing parking lot. You see right here, up in this corner, that will remain. Stormwater for the site is accommodated right at the intersection here of NC twelve and Herring Street. The infrastructure, it's served by Southern Outer Banks Water Systems, which is public water, and by private sewer, which is Carolina Water Service. The TRC reviewed this application and provides the following comments. It notes that a major site plan is required. It also notes the non-residential design standards and community compatibility standards will apply to this development. And thirdly, it notes that the multifamily design standards may want to be considered for the multi-use component. These are slightly different than the non-residential design standards, and talk to things such as creating a street edge and minimum height for first floor. So it's slightly different, and they may want to consider that. The Imagine Currituck designates this plan as G-three mixed-use centers. The G-three list appropriate uses as mixed residential with a variety of housing types, horizontal and vertical mixed-use development, multifamily developments, office and institutional uses, regional commercial centers, and medium-to-high residential densities. Some policies and goals that you may want to consider in this application are land use goal one, to encourage development at appropriate densities for their location. Land use policy one point three, to consider community character. Land use policy one point four, to protect the uniqueness of the county. Land use policy two point one, to coordinate site design with nearby businesses. Transportation policy two point one, and Parks and Recreation policy two point one, which speak to pedestrian walkways for new development. General Corolla Land Use Policy one point seven, minimize commercial strip development. Corolla G-three transect policy two point one, to concentrate commercial development in existing neighborhood nodes. And lastly, Corolla G-three transect policy two point two, that existing PUDs continue according to their master plan. With that, I will leave you with the special use review standards and stand by for any questions.
So, following on the heels of the, the application that was before us,
Yes.
it is the duty of the applicant to demonstrate that these will be met. Just as a question, how can they prove number four?
Number four? Well, from a county standpoint, our TRC has reviewed this application. It's gone through that process. In that process, city agencies such as Fire, EMS, and Police do examine that application. We have received comments, and the comments from that TRC have been addressed in this plan.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from?
So I'm just gonna kind of get clarification on what the chairman just asked. So are you saying that it's the duty of the applicant to prove just one, two, and three, that the agenda packet proves four?
No, no, ma'am. It is the applicant, is the burden of the applicant to prove these four review standards for a special use permit.
Okay.
It's kind of confusing. That's why I brought it up. I caught that the board had this discussion, and how can they prove fire or law enforcement? You know, they have water and sewer there, those are the, and then schools are easy, right? Those are, we know those things, but we haven't identified fire and rescue, as we talked through this many times, dealing with other things, so. And I, you know, it'd be interesting, Paul, to get your take on it.
So, so we, I think, especially been on the board a while, right? You know there's certain things that just aren't, right? You know that, well, I mean, this is kind of different because of how many people in such a close spot. So I don't know that there's anything that could speak to it, except somebody who's familiar with multifamily high-density may be able to speak that the, for example, what I've heard presented in the past, the type of neighborhood that we're putting in, we've got security cameras here and da-da-da-da, you know, we're monitoring this, we're doing this, there's lights here. Facilities like this, with the following infrastructure, I hate to make a case, but it, but, but what they've done is they've made the case that there's onsite, you know, security that makes sure that the lights go off at ten o'clock, whatever that is, but it helps make us feel better in knowing that there isn't really going to be an additional law enforcement impact, for example. That because the buildings are being constructed and there's adequate access to fire and rescue, that should not be adversely impacted any more than anything else. But it's somebody that's got credibility making that statement, right? Rather than us being left with an unaddressed topic, you know, somebody's got to make the comment, right? We, we can't just, I don't think we can just blanketly assume that, anyway. That was my feelings, right?
Right, yeah, and I get it, and that's why I brought it up. I mean, it's, we're grappling with it with adequate public facilities. Sorry, we're, we're off topic here a little bit, but-
But we hate, but we collectively hate this.
Right.
Right? We hate number four.
Right. Okay. Sorry to get off topic a little bit, but it's, it seems a good sticking point.
And then, and then to go, let me real quick touch on number two. We'd like to see data typically to make that case, not, trust me, I'm, anyway.
I understand. Okay, Kevin, I hope that was entertaining for you, thank you.
It was.
It was entertaining for us, but then we're easy.
Actually, Mr. Turner, while you're up here, the staff's up here. One of, in your comments, you put in there the, the two hundred-foot, it was on page.
That the facades could not exceed two hundred feet in length?
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Was that, are you, are you satisfied with?
They did address that comment with their, with their plan.
What about the, let's see here, oh, just for, for those that want to know, quarry minds, what establishes a street edge? That was commented on several times in the, in the mixed, in the condos, I guess, in the back.
Right, typically, a street edge, we're looking for bringing the buildings towards the Main Street. You know, not having that parking in between. You know, multi-use projects, that, that's what we mostly consider. Now, the ordinance does say establish a street edge where possible. You know, this is a mixed-use, non-residential project on the parcel as a whole, but that's typically what we're looking at, is bringing the buildings to the street.
Okay, and was that adequately addressed as well? Do you feel like that was? And that was mentioned, it looks like, in a couple different back and forths.
It, it was. You know, the applicant has moved forward with, with this design. I think they could speak more towards iterations they have tried, but they feel that this design is the one they want to move forward with.
Right.
You know, again, we reviewed the site with the non-residential design standards, noting that the multi-use and establishing that street front in the multifamily component is something we looked at. But they moved forward with their, their design.
And lastly, the, the big burning question, the bathrooms that was commented on, did we, did we straighten that out, or did you straighten that out?
Well, we, we discussed that in length. We also discussed that with the county attorney. And where we landed on that is really, there's some questions that still need to be answered. And I, you know, from staff's standpoint, we're gonna look into it, and we're fine addressing that at a later date, not necessarily with this application, because
That was my next question.
we're not entirely sure whose responsibility it is. So to lay that burden on the applicant with this application, you know, we're fine addressing that down the road.
Okay, thank you. That was my next question, is, was it, is it really necessary to deal with that, with this application? Because it was a separate project or phase, right?
Correct.
All right. That was it for me. Thank you. Anything from the board? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right. Yes, you may. I would ask you guys to get a little closer to the mic, act like you're friendly and like each other. It was a little hard to pick up some of that last time.
Mr. Kemp, from your perspective, in having reviewed this project, as to the requirement number three that the applicant has to provide, is this application in conformity with the land use plan?
Yes, staff looked through this, reviewed this application, and does feel that it is in conformity with the land use plan.
Thank you. All right, the second part is that you indicated earlier that there was a technical review of the plan.
Yes, sir.
And who, who participated in that?
Multi, multiple county and state agencies. From the county, we have planning, water, public utilities, engineering, stormwater, and then we have, from public safety, we have Fire, EMS, Police, and then we have state agencies such as NC DIT.
As part of this plan, did you receive any indication that water and sewer would be available for the site?
Yes.
As part of the technical review, did you receive comments from the safety, whether the Police and/or Fire or EMS?
They reviewed the application, we received what comments were submitted.
And were those comments as submitted addressed by the applicant as part of this application process?
Yes, they appeared to with the TRC approval.
That's all the questions that I have, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan? This is a bit of an odd duck approach to how we have typically done business. Mr. Kraus is using our staff to basically establish something, is that?
I think certainly Mr. Kemp can testify to number three, as he is charged with interpreting the UDO, and that would go right in with whether this is in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plan. As far as number four?
Macon? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Typically, when we make a motion for approval or whatever, we cite specific UDO codes and specific land use plans and items of fact that we use to base our statement on. I mean, I, he can certainly testify as to that, but I don't, I'm not sure it's his job to provide the applicant with the specific elements of conformity and of,
Right.
you know, approval.
It's definitely the applicant's burden.
And so somewhere, somebody on that side needs to make the case.
Yes, it is the applicant's burden to prove those four things. But, but what I was saying was, Mr. Kemp can certainly testify to number three, but it's not the county's burden to prove that these are met.
Well, through his testimony, does that prove? Can, can, for instance, number three, in this case, be, be proven through cross-examination, for lack of a better description, of our staff?
Cross-examination does elicit testimony that if substantive and competent may be considered by the board in determining whether an element has been met.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clear that up, because you're just coming at it from a different, oblique angle from how we normally deal with this.
But can that be considered adequate findings of fact? I guess would be my question.
Yes.
What, his statement is considered acumenary.
So he doesn't need to put on, like, his own expert for number three?
No.
Okay.
The general rule is that the burden is on the applicant to prove they've met all the requirements of the UDO. And once having met that burden, through any evidence, either direct that they submit themselves or through indirect or cross-examination, if they have deemed by you as the finders of fact to have met that burden, then the burden shifts, not to the county, the burden shifts to anyone in opposition to the application. But you are the finders of fact, and it's for you to determine the credibility, whether the evidence is substantive, competent material, in making your decision.
Okay. All right. You're still uncomfortable with that? Well, well, Kevin is a subject matter expert on our UDO.
Again, that's up to the board to determine, whether, again, that's up to the board to determine if you think it's material, substantial, or competent evidence. That's, that is up to the board.
And Kevin is a subject matter expert when it comes to our UDO, I would hope, at this point, in his tenure?
Well, it looks like an applicant, all they would have to do is have our people testify for them. I'm just very uncomfortable how that's going down.
At some degrees, that's okay. He can't testify to values abutting lands, not endangering public health or safety. So it's just one, one of the three, four aspects. Excuse me, so, okay. Continue on, sir.
Good evening. Stephen Craddock, one oh two Hickory Hill Drive, Grandy, North Carolina.
Excuse me, real quick. Do we have to, no offense, Stephen. Do we have to go through all of his creds?
Yes.
For each, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Please go ahead.
I'm your favorite real estate appraiser.
That's right. If I might, to the board, he's been trying to provide to me his pretty good job. I can never pass.
Yeah, I can.
And I'll be happy to simply hand that up and tender this to you as evidence that he's qualified.
Okay.
Also, I have received today a written memorandum that I'd like to introduce to the evidence of what he's gonna testify concerning, providing evidence as well. I've got a copy for one if you'd like.
Perfect, thank you. Always prepared, Stephen. It's like a, some kind of military motto, I think, in there, right? One of the service-
Somewhere in there.
That's it, yeah.
Maybe militant, not military.
You're not squeezing by me. You want me to pass those? You want me to pass those now?
Are you going to read this?
Yep.
Okay, I'd like it delivered in a monotone voice, voice piece.
Isn't that what my normal voice is? I'm going to skip the first page, uh, other than to highlight that, uh, over my, over 20 years as a real estate appraiser here in the county, that I've performed over 6,000 appraisal assignments and specialist studies within the 11-county Albemarle area. I was hired by the applicant to study and determine the possible effects, if any, that may occur from the proposed addition of 127 multifamily residential dwelling units, commercial units, and a recalculation of open space on the existing site, and whether it will or will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands, and if it will or will not be in harmony with the area in which it's located. Some of the background about market values in this specific area would be Currituck County's prior peak of the local real estate market pricing occurred in July of 2006. At that time, the values of properties throughout the county began a general decline until 2008, when locally and nationally, we experienced what economists call the Great Recession. This is when property values hit all time lows and foreclosures became the norm across the United States. According to the U.S. National Bureau of Economic Research, this recession started in December 2007 and ran until 2009. We felt the negative effects of this Great Recession locally, both during and long after the so-called end. Property values here in Currituck began to gently increase in 2010 and has remained in an upward trend since then, and Corolla and Corolla areas suffered the hardest. In Corolla, supply and demand are not in balance at this time. In appraising, we call this undersupply. This means that there's a greater demand for properties than there is a supply of properties available. According to the Outer Banks Association of Realtors Multiple Listing Service, median home sales prices within Corolla zip code has increased at a somewhat average rate from 2010 to 2018, but have increased more significantly over the last five years or so. This continuing increase has been caused by the increased demand for homes in the Corolla area and decreased number of foreclosures available for sale in Corolla and past positive national economic and banking factors. If we use the end of 2005 statistics as the beginning point, the median sales price in Corolla at the end of 2005, just before the peak of the market, was $830,000 with 267 home sales during that time. The median sales price in Corolla in 2009, at the bottom end of the market, was $526,125, with 110 home sales. This shows the severe drop in the values and the number of sales from 2005. But more recently, the median sales prices in Corolla five years ago in 2018 was $505,000 with 242 home sales. This shows the then-market flatness in home values, and shows the increase in the number of sales over the 10-year period since 2009. And currently, to date in 2023, the median sales price in Corolla is $924,000 with 139 home sales, and guess what? The year still isn't over yet. This shows an increase in home values and a huge increase in the median sales price over the last five years since December 31, 2018. That is an average of about 20 sales per month and a five-year median sales price increase of 84%. The 2023 sales statistic is a very strong indicator of the stability of the real estate sales market in Corolla. These numbers provide undisputable evidence that demand for residential is not going away, but it is still increasing, even as interest rates have increased. Sales prices now are at a similar level as they were around mid-2006, and the home prices in Corolla are still increasing. It also shows that the median home sales price is going up, leading one to believe that the Corolla sales market has had a full recovery. I do not foresee that this current positive trend will be changing anytime soon. That, another fact that proves this trend is continuing is that currently, there are 111 properties on market or under contract. This is almost five more months of possible sales at the current rate of sales per month just in Corolla. When it comes to the subject property that we're talking about, I personally inspected this property today on 8/21/23, and I viewed the properties adjoining and abutting the subject property, and I have viewed the surrounding neighborhood areas, both commercial and residential, that are near the subject property. What I have found during this process is that currently, the subject property is not at its highest and best use. If you approve the proposed project on the existing site, it will improve the subject property's highest and best use, and it will increase its potential utility. The plans that the applicant and engineer have submitted show that the structures they propose to build are similar in design to the structures on nearby properties, and similar to the structures in the immediate and nearby neighborhoods. This proposal is not an unusual project for the area, as there are already other multi-use projects in use nearby, and projects that have been approved but not yet built. With the increased demand and need for housing I have already proven to you, also comes the increased demand for stores, offices, and commercial uses. The applicant's plans, if approved, will help to add that additional business component to this ever-growing landscape of residential and commercial demands in Corolla. And some of the future benefits to the county will be, as a result, from the completed subject property if it's approved. It won't only help just the citizens and our visitors, but it'll help the county itself. Currently, the county has the assessed tax value of the property at approximately $2,984,200, which gives the county a total of $13,877 annually in tax income based at our current rate. The applicant is estimating that the total tax value assessment of the property after the multifamily and commercial portion is fully completed would be approximately $140 million, which will give the county $651,000 annually of tax income at, at our current rate. And not only will the county receive the real estate property taxes from the property owner, but it also will benefit from the additional occupancy taxes that will be generated from the property when rentals occur there. Additionally, the county will benefit from the sales and use taxes that will be generated by the businesses that will occupy the commercial portions of this property. And furthermore, nearby businesses off-site will benefit from the additional occupancy from their own sales of gasoline and food, souvenirs, and the like. Keeping these monies local is the key to all of our independent businesses' success to increase the diversification of the county's tax-based revenues, and for the stability of the income stream to allow for reliability in the county's future revenue and budget calculations. Approving this project is logical, and it will promote the logical and orderly development of the subject property, which is the true crux of good planning and development. And at this time, I see no possible unintended consequences from the approval of the project based on the current and available information known. Based on the evidence that has been presented by the applicant, by the remarks from county staff, and the technical review committee, NCDOT information, and the in-depth research that I personally performed for this assignment, I have determined that it is in my professional and expert opinion that the proposed addition of the 127 multifamily residential dwelling units, commercial units, and recalculation of open space on the existing site will not injure the values of adjoining or abutting lands, and it will be in harmony with the area in which it's located. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board? Thank you. No further questions? Thank you, Mr. Craddock.
Thank you all.
Third, as always.
If I might, uh, I fail to note that I did wish to tend to him as an expert, and I did not officially do that. I'm not going to offend him.
Uh, yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sumit Gupta, and I appreciate the board's consideration of our application and your time tonight. Just want to say a few brief things here, um, so, a little history about this property. We purchased this property a few years ago, uh, but it has been zoned a commercial property for some time, I think about two decades now, um, from our research. It was leased since 2007 and prior, but probably dates back much before that as a commercial part, property for the overall Monterey Shores PUD. In 2007, I believe is the correct date, I believe in the staff report, it mentioned 2010, I believe it's 2007, there was an approval of 127 multifamily residential units on this property, residential units. The property, being a commercial property, as far as the uses that we're looking at, hotel, multifamily, um, retail, restaurants, are all allowable uses within this zoning. What this application is, uh, asking for is these two points. One point is the reduction of open space. In this, uh, and that ties to, again, the overall PUD and Monterey Shores. That request does, uh, still meet the parameters of the overall PUD and, and having a 35% open space. We also, through this, still end up with 20% open space requirement for the subject property. Just want to mention something, uh, there was, in addition to the requirement of open space coming from the overall PUD on this property, there was also an open space tied to a utility green open space that was required by the state. It's no longer required, and there's not a requirement at a local or state level. So, in one ways, we're kind of also cleaning up that open space. It was, it's roughly a similar size, about one acre and a half, um, so there was another reason to remove that open space. But mostly does meet the, um, the parameters of the PUD, and we are not changing the required lot coverage, uh, and we're still meeting that, it's required the 65%. The other item, what's in front of you, is the approval of the multifamily site plan. Like, um, residential, we're not increasing density. We are staying within that and all other applicable rules. As a formal process, multifamily has to come forward as board, so we're presenting a site plan for your consideration. And I just want to add, overall, why we're doing this right here, there's several development options we can pursue on this property. One thing is to do more single-family residential houses. That was something we looked at and was part of our early planning. The conclusion we came to is Corolla has a lot of single-family residential houses. What we feel as development, and indeed in the local area, is that Corolla is missing adequate restaurants and retail space. Arguably, you know, there's not enough hotel rooms in Corolla. The Outer Banks has, in the last 20, 30 years, we're down to about 3% to 4%. For every 100 people coming to Darren Currituck County, three to four are staying in hotels. Uh, we've lost a lot of hotels, uh, you know, putting hotel rooms in Corolla, it's another hospitality option for people, visitors in Corolla versus only big houses. Restaurants, again, we, we feel restaurants and retail space are something that's going to add value to Corolla as well. And multifamily, there's very limited, out of all the development in Corolla, there's very limited multifamily in Corolla. We think that's another, um, use there that would add value, uh, to this property. So, our intention is to really develop this, what we feel was the intended plan, to keep it as a commercial, mixed-use, and it's very limited property in Corolla that has this type of zoning. So, this, we believe, is a more difficult path of development, but it's something that we feel is the right path for the county and this property. And I'm here to answer any questions or the board may have.
I guess you understand that, you know, I know you went through a lot of work to come up with the design, and, um, that, that, you know, approving this amended sketch plan with what you presented, um, the Board of Commissioners is going to want to see that when you come back to us, something very similar to what, you know, the pretty watercolors that we have up here. I mean, you, you've gone to such detail that you have what appears to be like brick pavers for the road, or something like that on the main street of it. So, I just want to, wanted to bring that to your attention more than anything. I, I know you're, you put a lot of thought and energy into this and considerable time as well, but, um, just wanted to point that fact out, that when you show this in such a great detail conceptually, that's going to be kind of our idea of what is coming forward and expectation. Thank you, that was the word I was looking for. So, just, just wanted to point that fact out to you, you know, as you, as you move forward to this, through this process, so. I don't have any real questions of you this evening. Does the board have any questions? So, I think that's about it. Anything further you'd like to?
That is our plan.
Okay.
Absolutely, do a very nice development. I just, I want to be very accurate and, um, you know, whatever the decision is made here.
Yep, just, we've had, we've had people come in and, you know, and show us something, and not to say that she would do that, and then, when they, what they bring back, they've tried to change, and, um, I don't, I don't get that feeling from you at all, but I just want, I just making it, I just want to point that out, because we've had that happen before to the Board of Commissioners.
No, I, we will have to meet all development standards that, as we move forward.
Right.
This is certainly not a bait and switch
Right.
thing. If, if we wanted to do an easier route, we would have not shown you all the, you know, this is something that we take pride in. But there's no guarantee if you approve this, this is going to happen. A hotel is very, very difficult to get done right here, particularly in this region, this area, particularly in Corolla, that when interest rates the way they are,
Mm-hmm.
construction costs. I have partners who are involved right now, who've been in the hotel business for 40 years. I pulled in really good experts to, uh, get involved in the planning, because the hotel has a lot of operational sides that you have to really know to do a first-class hotel, and it's very challenging right now to, 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 you know, but our intention is to do this hotel and this whole community with the highest standards that are feasible. I can assure you that, and, uh, that is definitely our motivation moving forward.
Okay. All right, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, these, these are going on for hours. We, yeah, we're, we're expecting to be here till one or two. You're not, you're not getting out here early.
I hope that's not true.
Not sure.
Everybody's safe in this room.
All right, moving on.
Please state your name.
Michael Wayne Strater, Jr.
And how are you? Are you licensed, sir?
I'm a licensed professional engineer.
And how long have you been licensed as an engineer?
Over 17 years.
And you're employed by whom?
Quibon Associates, a local civil, environmental, land planning and surveying firm.
And partially, how many projects have you been involved in, in that capacity in Currituck County?
I believe the board has seen me a few times, um, eas, easily dozens.
All right. I would tend to him as an expert.
Any objections?
And as an engineer, uh, let me ask one further question. Are you familiar with Currituck County UDO?
I am very familiar with
Are you familiar with Currituck County 2024 Vision Plan?
I am.
I would tend to him as an expert in engineering and in the Currituck County UDO and your 2024 Vision Plan.
Okay, any objections from the board? All right, thank you, sir. We'll accept.
And just to be clear, I, I mean, I've designed many, many commercial development projects, residential projects, mixed-use group development projects in both the Commonwealth of Virginia and within North Carolina, and plenty of projects within Currituck County, so hopefully you will tender me as an expert witness.
We are, you're good.
Keep talking. Keep talking. Nationally, your expertise and plan that has been submitted. Is the proposed, is the proposed use of that plan, will it endanger the public health and safety? And before you answer that, please explain why you would know that or not know that.
Right. Keeping in mind that what has been presented to you is a conceptual development plan for a special use permit application. The actual site plan design with all the nitty and gritty of what we do hasn't all completely been done. However, there's been a whole lot of thoughtfulness put into this project over a year at this point easily. And we don't see any red flags that are raised that give me pause to be able to say that the project, if designed, permitted, constructed and certified in the end would not endanger public health or safety. And also going a step farther, you know, we're, we're looking at this and county staff knows through TRC review of all the regulatory agencies that are involved, you know, we're looking from a public water standpoint, wastewater, and in this case, we're, this project will be serviced by the county's very good public drinking water. It'll be serviced by a centralized sewer, so nothing's treated on-site. And then from a stormwater perspective, we know that we're going to be designing and we've already looked at a lot of this ahead of time. The post, in accordance with the county's stormwater standards, but also the state standards. So the post-developed runoff from the five-year storm event will be routed back to the discharge no, no greater than the two-year pre-develop wooded condition on-site. And that'll be through the use of on-site stormwater features like a wet retention basin, but also through the use of low-impact development practices like permeable pavers and other avenues. And also, from a fire safety perspective, you know, we, we've already looked at this. We know what the available fire flow is, is for this subject property. We've preliminarily looked at what the needed fire flows would be for the proposed structures. So the needed fire flow will be within the available fire flows. We're not, you know, proposing something that can't be serviced. And also the fire apparatus access, building heights, you know, nothing that's going to be submitted as a full major site plan to the county will, will hinder the county's ability to, to service the facilities. Even from a refuse standpoint, we've already preliminarily decided where county pickup could occur, circulation. See, I guess I should touch on, although it's currently three individual parcels of land, we've looked at trying to minimize the number of accesses on NC Highway 12 to two versus, you know, it could be three, given that there are three parcels of land. But I'll stop there.
Mr. Kemp was trying to testify concerning the fact that a technical review was made to this project and in technical review, among others, police, fire and rescue reviewed this plan. And there were certain comments made by after technical review. Has the use, was that modified to meet those what was requested by the technical reviews?
It was with a recent package.
Was there any indication in the technical reviews beyond what you've already testified to that you actually looked at the ability through fire, the ability for that said that they did not have adequate capacity through either fire or police for this particular project?
We haven't heard of any concerns about not having adequate. Having, having submitted a properly designed and it'll, it'll be reviewed by each and every state agency, including the locality.
So a question. So when, in the tech review committee, they say no comment acknowledged. That's what's in our packet. Can you attest that the comment, no comment, was actually provided by county representatives? Are you going to be able to testify to that effect? Or are you just, are we assuming that because no comment was made? You understand the difference between active action and passive action, right? If someone doesn't provide a comment, then does that mean they didn't, they don't have anything to say? Or does that just mean we didn't get a response?
Well, let, let's keep in mind that, so there was an initial project application package. There were, there were review comments from probably every, every aspect of the county, but then
Do you know that?
When we
I will tell you, if they did, this would be the first project in probably 40 years that everybody actually looked at it and provided input.
I, I do hear you. But if you're, if you're trying to, if you're trying to hone in on public safety or, or fire, chief building inspector, public water, I mean, each and every one of those particular staff members did, did review and comment. Now on subsequent reviews, it may have had no comment because it may have not been addressed.
Yep. And then here, as a matter of fact, Bill Nunes, as a building inspector and chief fire hack guy, as far as code is concerned, remarked that the needed fire flow for construction is determined by the ISO method. And then no new construction can occur that creates needed fire flow greater than the available fire flow, which you in fact answered in your opening preamble, so.
Right. That's actually what led me down this path. Actually, other comments that he made that were not as explicit. All I'm, what I'm suggesting to you is this is a minefield where we got a general approval from county staff saying we're in agreement, we're in compliance. And I know that we don't routinely, not everyone, and it's, it's the county's problem, not necessarily yours. But I would not testify to the effect that it was reviewed by county staff and all of those things were addressed because I will absolutely guarantee you there were things that were not looked at. Well,
I hear you.
My experience would suggest that.
And, and when, if and when, and I believe Mr. Kemp would probably agree with this. When we don't elicit a response, I mean, we do try to make contact directly with someone, just because sometimes, I mean, either they couldn't respond in the, in the time that they had or, because we, we do want to make sure that we've garnered a review from
So Commissioner, so what you would like to see is maybe a little comment.
Well,
Was reviewed by staff and no comments needed?
That's actually a comment I was going to have, Kevin.
Okay.
No comment is not good enough. I mean, reviewed with no comment or reviewed by so-and-so with, you know, no comment or something like that. But it's, it's not always consistently applied to the tech review report that we see that, I mean, there are clearly times when I know they didn't get a chance to look at it and, and all we see is no, no comment.
And that would just allow the board then to know that at least it was looked at by that, yes. Absolutely noted. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
I have some more questions.
Go for it. All right, well, we're
Let's make sure we understand that there are two different points that this board is being asked to address. One is the reduction in the amount of open space. The other is, and I want to talk about that for a second. The open space that is being reduced is on this site only, correct?
Correct.
But the overall open space requirements for the PUD will still be in place. Those aren't being asked to be changed.
Correct.
And they'll have to be complied with throughout the plot, correct?
Correct.
All right. Now, as to the multifamily. There was testimony that this project was previously approved for 127 units. And I believe it was actually in 2003. Is that correct?
What, what I gathered is 2007 is when it's definitively approved by county, amended sketch plan. I believe you're probably referring to the 2003 where it looks like that's where the 8.36 acres of commercial designation was approved by county.
All right. So I had it wrong. What else is new? That in fact, this has already been approved for 127 units.
Correct.
So we're here because this is now going to be multifamily units. Is that also correct?
Correct.
The, and you just testified that it's already been approved for commercial. Also correct?
8.36 acres of the 13-acre tract has been approved for commercial designation.
Based on your knowledge of the Curta County UDO, is your opinion that this project, the use that is being proposed is in conformity with the land use plan?
I can attest that yes, because the, the PUD sketch plan has long been approved for 8.36 acres of commercial development and the 127 residential dwelling units. The parcels are within the Corolla Full Use Land Use Plan class and the use is in conformity with the future land use described within G2 Control Growth, specifically encouraging commercial development to cluster at appropriate locations.
I have no further questions. If the board has any other questions.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
The only other point that I was also going to bring into this is, as I did in the last public hearing, your staff was trying to provide too many information concerning capability of schools for, and it does appear based on bad information received from the county that there's adequate space for schools for the Curta County, except again, as a previous indicator, I can't tell you whether it's elementary or not, because I can't tell where you send the elementary school.
Closest school north of the bridge.
Pardon?
Closest school north of the bridge, so that's about it. All right. Thank you. All right. Anything else from the board for staff or the applicant? All right. This is again a public hearing. Only person I signed up this evening for the public comment portion of this is Mark Thompson. You're good. Okay. Anyone else in the room? Yes, sir. Well, James, we've been through this before. You, you didn't get sworn in.
Public comment. I wasn't doing a testimony.
Well, it's actually, that's the, that's the problem we were talking about earlier tonight is
Yes.
You're, you're here, you have to give testimony based on competent substantive, you know, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
I believe that everybody in this room could pretty much agree with what I'm about to say. It's not a, it's like a know-all thing in regards to the UDO, that the burden is on the applicant. When I tried to present data to the board about the schools and their capacities, you told me I was unable to present that. The attorney just stood up here and tried to present that. He is not an expert in school capacities. He cannot present that data to this board. That is in my opinion. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, sir. Okay. Well, since there's nothing built there, there's actually no capacity to consider. It's an amended sketch plan. Some of the stuff we're, we're going down the road of, prematurely, there's nothing on the property. It's a vacant piece of dirt. Other than fires showing out to put out a tree that might have caught on fire, we don't have to worry about. There's not going to be law enforcement action. There's not going to be any school, there's not going to be any fire rescue or any county facilities at this moment until they come in for the next SUP phase of this. So that's when those things will become truly applicable. I'll close the public comment this time. And I guess we're up to the point of a motion for this unless there's any further discussion from the board on anything. Since this is my backyard, I guess I'll be the one to make the motion on, two motions on this, as it were. I'm going to approve PB 87-56 Monterey Shores amended sketch plan slash special use permit because the applicant has demonstrated the proposed use meets the review standards of the UDO. The TRC review comments provided in staff report shall become conditions of approval. You guys had a chance to review that. Are you okay with that? Okay. Getting a nod from behind you. All right. Thank you. The special use permit review standards worksheet for us, sorry, I normally don't read all this stuff in here. The use will not endanger the public health or safety. The use will not injure the adjoining value or budding lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. The use will be in conformity with the Imagine Curtaq 24 Vision Plan or other officially adopted plan as proffered by Mr. Kemp, our director, and as stated in the staff report on page 47 of our agenda packet. Number four, the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now for the other portion of this. I'm going to approve PB 87-56 Monterey Shores Multifamily Special Use Permit because the applicant has demonstrated the proposed use meets the review standards. Again, TRC comments provided in the staff report shall become conditions of approval. The use will not endanger the public health or safety. The use will not injure the value of adjoining or budding lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it was located. And the use will be in conformity with the Imagine, in conformity with the Imagine Curtaq 2040 Vision Plan or other officially adopted plan. Again, as stated by Kevin Kemp, our planning director, and in our staff report on page 47. And the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities.
Second to that one.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Let's take a five-minute recess before we jump into our next agenda item. Thank you.
The public hearing this evening will be PB 23-17 for a pawn shop. Kevin Spow and Karen Razzle, Vassal, Laker. Our requesting special use permit for a pawn shop business to be operated at 512 Curtaq Highway previously. Chief of Police, Chief of Public Security, tax math parcel 9A, parcel 72, moving out of township.
Do you have anyone here for the applicant to represent them, attorney?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anyone you need to swear?
Thank you. Do you have anyone you need to?
Two witnesses.
Okay. All right. Got mic'd. All right. Guys, raise your right hand. You all saw I'm going to swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so I hope you got.
I do.
Thank you. Good evening, Kevin. Long time no see.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So this is an application for a pawn shop located at 512 Carrottoke Highway. The site is loc, whoop, wrong way. Site is located in Moayak. It's at the intersection of Carrottoke Highway and South Landing Road. Zooming a little closer, right on the other side of Carrottoke Highway is the farmer's market. This is an existing gas station and the proposed use will go in one of two units in the building. Site is zoned GB, as are the properties to the northeast and west. The property to the south is SFM. But the property directly behind the subject property is vacant, undeveloped wooded, wooded land. So the request is to operate a pawn shop in a commercial unit. Showing there in the picture is the existing building. The pawn shop will be on the right side of the building, the green part, which was previously occupied by a 252 tire outlet. There are no changes proposed with the site. It meets parking and zoning requirements in that respect. The applicants currently operate Elizabeth City Pawn, which is located at 1501 West Arring House Street in Elizabeth City. The TRC reviewed this request and provided the following comment, and that is that the dumpster located on the north side of the building, which I believe you can see right here in this image, will be removed once cleanup is here in this image, um, will be removed once cleanup is, uh, complete. There is another dumpster on the other side of the building in a more appropriate location. Imagine Keratuck, uh, designates the site as G two controlled growth. G two encourages medium density residential and neighborhood scale commercial development. Two goals and policies which may be applicable when reviewing this application are economic development policy one, to support existing businesses and promote new businesses, and Moayak policy two point one, manage the increased urban level of growth in Moayak. This application is also included in the Moayak Small Area Plan. It is designated, uh, C conservation and F full service. Uh, retail use is compatible in the full service. Uh, the conservation area, uh, you know, mostly it seems would be intended for the wooded undeveloped portion of the lot, uh, despite, you know, showing that half the building is in conservation, half is in full. It would be reasonable to say that, you know, the full service encompasses the commercial And with that, I will stand by for any questions and leave you with the special use permit review standards.
Questions, comments, concerns? It's pretty straightforward. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chairman.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Wood. I'm from Edenton. I was raised there and live there now, and, uh, practiced law in Gates County, one of only two lawyers there with Godwin and Wood. And I'm here on behalf of Kevin Stroud and Jeremy Basil. They had been operating the, uh, Elizabeth City Pawn and Gun for fifteen, well, thirteen years, sorry. And, um, and they've done a fine job there. I just want to illustrate, you know, it's not the worst case scenario for a pawn shop. Sometimes things get a terrible name as a result of the worst examples, but I think after we're done, you'll realize that this is, is more of a retail store. Um, you know, as Mr. Kemp said, we're dealing with five twelve Carrottoke Highway, falls into table four point one point two, necessitating the special use, and, uh, and that's why we're here. And if I may, I'd like to qualify Bob Luther. He's with Northeastern N C Appraisal, and he'll be my first expert that I'd like to tender. Mr. Luther, can you come on up?
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you would just please state your name.
Robert Luther. Um, I'm a North Carolina general certified appraiser.
And just tell, uh, tell us how many years of experience you have in the appraisal business?
I've been appraising since twenty ten, fourteen years.
And, and how many appraisals would you estimate that you've carried out in this area?
Hmm, in, commercial appraisals are a little different than residential. Our jobs average a week or more per job, so I'm in the seven to eight hundred range at this point.
And you've had the opportunity to analyze property. Any questions there at five twelve Carrottoke Highway?
I have.
And in your opinion, what is the, uh, the impact on value if the proposed pawn shop were allowed to locate there?
Um, the, the original question that was proposed to me would, would a pawn shop damage neighboring value? And if I can answer that question.
Yeah, that's.
Um, in my, uh, since I've been collecting data for my, since I've been an independent appraiser, which was about twenty fourteen, I've been collecting data for sales in about a twelve county area. I have never collected data that suggests that a pawn shop damages the value of a sale, of a commercial shopping center or independent building. Um, apples to apples, uh, shopping center of equal age, equal maintenance, the occupation by a pawn shop does not, I have never seen a negative discount of value on, on an apples to apples comparison in this twelve county area.
And how many pawn shops have you done appraisals for or evaluations?
I, I'm, I'm speaking on collection of sales data, not just on appraisals. Uh, so, uh, thirty to forty properties that included pawn shops, but that was not appraisal reports on the pawn shop, those were comparable sales.
And that's for this, this case or in your career?
In my, in my career. My jurisdiction, my coverage area would include Hurtford County, Ahoski, Williamson, Plymouth, um, back this way.
And were there any pawn shops evaluated in, for this case?
I, I did not do a full blown appraisal report for this case, on this building.
So then what you're stating that is, this type of application, this setup, like, like you're proposing, you haven't appraised any similar sites like this?
Um, I have done several shopping centers that included pawn shops, yes. But the majority of my data is coming from collective sales.
So would you say you've done shopping centers that had a pawn shop, and were you appraising for a business that was being sold, a condo out unit or something to that effect?
I was appraising like for, uh, a mortgage that was being refinanced.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, um, any experience in terms of their shop in Elizabeth City, surrounding sales around that?
Hmm, my comment, there would be the improvement of that shopping center since they've been there, as compared to the previous tenant. That, that shopping center has added value through its renovations and through the presentation of that, of the Elizabeth City Pawn Shop.
I, I guess the question, I'm still, I don't know if I've heard it yet or not, somebody hasn't. I mean, it, the, the value of the adjoining budding lands, um, the surrounding areas, um, you know, it'll be in harmony and, um, won't injure the value. So you're saying that you've researched this neighborhood, pawn shops with the surrounding neighborhoods, property values, and, and they haven't gone up or down, or they stayed the same? Is that?
I, I have not done a, a report on this subject property. What I'm, what I'm saying is, you already have a commercial building. Um, the commercial building's already there, whether it affects the retail, whether it affects the single family homes, you know, a block or so behind it or not, um, that's not a question, because the building's already here. Uh, the question that was posed to me was, would a pawn shop add a discount or damage value? And I'm suggesting it will not.
So you're saying it will add, add value to that specific business? Is that what you're stating?
Um, I'm saying, I'm saying it will not damage value, and if, if you, if you look at the previous tenant that was in that building, based, and, and if you look at the operation of the store in Elizabeth City, um, they will likely add value.
Okay, so you're talking about add value to that building, then?
Yes.
Okay, that location specific, okay.
But that's not typically what the question is. I'm familiar with the building in Elizabeth City. It's sharp, I, right? But specifically, it's the adjoining and abutting lands and the adjoining budding properties. So your analysis should be showing us, right, based on study, analysis that you've done, that it's not going to injure the property values of the properties that are in the local area? Not the gas station next door, it not that it's better than what's there right now, because that's, what that individual facility owner does is what they do, right? It's, are you going to hurt anybody that's around it? So that's the question we need answered. Is a pawn shop in that location going to injure the value of the properties that are in the, the vicinity of where this building is?
Based on my analysis of comparable data in that.
Okay.
I've got one more, just to fill that same line of questions. You have analyzed the pawn shop in Elizabeth City, have you not? I mean, you've looked at it as it relates to the budding properties.
I have analyzed that shopping center.
And it is your opinion, and it is your opinion on the basis of your analysis, that it is not only not hurt, but beneficial to those neighboring properties?
The value of that shopping center has been increased.
And what neighboring properties are you referring to with the Elizabeth City Pawn Shop?
Uh, there's a Sears store to the right, which is.
So those are all independently owned?
They're.
A tenants on the shopping center?
Uh, there's a building there that has four or five tenants in it.
Oh, I'm, again, I'm well aware of the location. My question is, are they individually owned, the shops, or are they tenants to the whole building?
They're tenants to a larger building.
So the question is, compared to that building, the, the next building down the strip, have their property values been injured because there's a pawn shop in the building where the Sears is?
Well, it's logical to me that if you're not damaging the subject building, you're not damaging the, the next door neighbor.
Like, again, the question before him, and I get it, right? The question before him is the adjacent properties, not the facility that they're on.
I, if, 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 if I'm, I have to use comparable sales for everything.
Okay, so if I'm doing an appraisal on a house here.
Right.
Right? Whether it's a duplex or a single family home.
Right.
What we're asking is, if you're going to put in this home here, is it going to injure the property next door? It's not, are you injuring the duplex owner beside you? It's, are you going to injure the property next door? That's the question, that's.
If the overall.
So the answer may very well be, there's nothing next door. Just.
Well.
Maybe another way of looking at it, um, has the pawn shop in Elizabeth City diminished the value of the theater to the, uh, I guess you'd say the east of it or the food line? That's on the other side of it?
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
And Mr. Luther, in your expert opinion, would you find that a pawn shop or that location is in conformity with land use plan?
I would say it's inconformity.
That's really all I have for him, unless you all have.
Based on, what is he basing that as to the statement is that it's in conformity?
Well, he's, he's analyzing the classification of it, the general business, the special use.
Okay, so what sections in the land use plan is it in conformity with?
I didn't write a report.
Keratuck County, we, we, we have graduated from, you know, what used to go, go on, we run to ground the facts or try to do the best job we can to ensure that the decisions our board makes are legally defendable, right? And so consequently, you know, I'm not sure, I, I certainly haven't seen you since I've been on the board. We have a degree of expecta, we have an expectation of expert witness testimony that is probably far greater than anything you've ever seen in your life. And we need to do a better job county wise to ensure our applicants are prepared for what's going to happen when you get up here, right? Sorry.
You're on a roll tonight. Golly.
The, the questions are implying stigma of a pawn shop, just like there used to be stigma of a tattoo shop, or a lot of other stuff. And honestly, in the last, I'm not sure how far back you had to go to find that stigma, but in the present decade, I don't see it.
Uh, the one thing we didn't do was actually accept him as an expert witness. You just kind of, you kind of rolled right in there, so, uh, you're tendering him as an expert witness. Does, is the board willing to accept him as an expert witness?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. All right, let's get that out of the way. All right, anything further at this point in time?
Nothing, Mr. Luther.
Okay. Um, is it your opinion, after having appraised pawn shops regionally across twelve counties, you said, that having a pawn shop in this building will diminish the value or injure the value of this building?
No.
Will it injure the value of a budding properties?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Let's get that out there, in your opinion. All right, moving on. Thank you.
Yeah, if I may, uh, ask Kevin Stroud to come forward. And if you would, sir, please state your name.
Kevin Stroud.
And, uh, where do you reside?
Uh, Kitty Hope, North Carolina.
And how long have you owned and operated the, uh, Elizabeth City Pawn Shop in God?
Um, thirteen years. Thirteen years.
And if you would just briefly describe your day to day operation?
We, we, we're just, we're a retail store. We, we, uh, we're not really different than, oh, you know, you, you, we're a retail business. We, we sell. The only difference in a pawn shop is we, we loan money to people, uh, for items, but other than that, ninety percent of our business is not that, it's, it's just retail sales. We may sell jewelry, we may sell coins, uh, we anticipate selling guns at this location, but, um, we're, we're just a retail store. We've operated our business for thirteen years. Um, as I said, I think pawn shops have had a stigma in the past, but, uh, if you've been to ours, uh, we, as far as, as far, and I don't, I guess I'm not qualified to talk about property values next door, but I mean.
No, but just what you do, just your business, you have, it's yours, right? You can, you can speak to how, to the question.
You know, where we, if you saw the building that we're in now and, and how it looked thirteen years ago, yeah, I would argue all day that the, the independent owners, not the owner of our building, but the ones next door, Papa John's, I mean, uh, pizza, pizza place, food line, um, the gas station right next to us, those property values have gone up. I can't sit and say I'm going to prove it because none of them have been sold in the last fifteen years either, so that's, but, and of course, I guess you've seen where we're going, but we, 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 we buy and sell. That's pretty much all it is. It's just a retail business. Uh, we've worked with local law enforcement and, and, in, in the last thirteen years, and we've never had any issues whatsoever. Matter of fact, we, they're glad to have us because we're, you know, everything, and pawn shops are highly regulated by the state, so everything we do goes in every evening and it's, it is tracked, so we communicate with local, um, the sheriff's office every day. They know what we do by law. We have to tell them, okay, we've done this today, we've done this, they hears. So they use us as, we're a valuable resource to, to law enforcement. Um, so, but, but, and when the day is over, we're just a retail business.
And what are your hours of operation?
At our current store, we're ten, just ten to six, and not to say we wouldn't stay up in an hour later or so at Christmas or something, but, um, normally just ten to six.
So you're not open late at night?
No. I don't know.
You don't be like Pawn Stars and have your overnight window where you're handing stuff out on the strip?
My, my bedtime's eight, so I have to be home by.
Okay, gotcha. All right.
And you all have, uh, cameras, you know, do you anticipate having cameras?
Oh, yeah, we, I mean, we, again, we work with our, with, we, we've been, and we've been through this process right here four times now, um, and, you know, each time, we, we, we have to have camera sys, redundant camera systems, redundant alarm systems, just because of the nature of our business. Um, and, and what we've seen, we, we've never had any issues, so everything is locked and safe, and, and if you're gonna ever, I, I've said this before, if you're gonna try to do something nefarious, the pawn shop is probably one of the last places you want to do it. Go, go sell it on somewhere else, because when you sell it, that's probably going to get caught.
The other thing I would offer up is, you're not our first pawn shop.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I remember the one in Grandy.
Well, there was one in, uh, where the Centerra building is now, too. That was Coles Guns, and then it became Coles Guns and Pawn.
That was before my time, I think, uh, but Centerra, that's.
That long?
The medical office is there today. That must have been a while.
That must have been a while back then. I don't, okay, I remember there was one in...
And it did, it did great, so, I mean, that would have been a great, you know, Keratuck County's had them before, so, anyway.
Got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You going to change that green color?
You gotta change the green color. Staff testified you weren't changing anything. You gotta change the green.
No, that's, no, it, well, we're not physically building or adding on to the building or any of that, but yeah, the, it's going to look really good if it gets burned.
Of course.
I had to ask that.
I know, I know. It's been burning ever since... But you know what? You remember the green.
That's right, though.
I mean, I'm just saying. All right.
As far as your dealings with a fire, or, you know, if you had, based on your experience operating the other store, what is the extent of your dealings as far as fire and rescue?
We don't. We just, we're a retail business. We, we...
So there's nothing...
I get inspected, just like every other business, that has to have their fire extinguishers inspected, their exit signs done correctly, and I'm, we comply just like every other business.
You're not going to present with school-aged children for any reason? I mean, not going to put any drain on the school system with a pawn shop?
No, can't imagine.
When was the last dealing with law enforcement where you had a problem with the Elizabeth City store?
When you say problem...
I mean, like you had something, you know, it would weigh on the public facility and law enforcement, you know, having them come out, or...
We don't. We, again, we work with law enforcement, we, we're, I just met with the district attorney the other day, the new district attorney for our, for our area, and we work hand-in-hand with them. We, I know most of them, and they know us, and they know what we do and how we operate.
So when you say you deal with them, is it because things come in that someone's trying to pawn?
Could be.
And you got, you got a question about an item, maybe that, you know, could be a firearm, could be tools that maybe you got a feeling about? I mean, is that...
Wish that were the case, no. Because when I say that, in other words, if someone brings an item in, and in it, it's reported. Everything we do is reported, unlike all of the other businesses. And places can get gold, precious metal licenses, and they don't report anything, but we do. And so everything that happens is reported. So then if something is reported down the line that matches the description, they're going to come see us immediately. And if it's something that they determine was, was possibly stolen, they just take it right then, and we're the ones, we're out. And that's just a part of doing business. But at the same time, they're able to, you know, everything we do, we document, everything is done on a computer point-of-sale system where IDs, everything's checked, has to be valid, has to be copied, has to take, we have to take pictures of it. So, so that, they use us quite a bit to catch people, but, but there again, I don't want to act like it's, you know, we're taking in stolen stuff every day, because we don't, again, if you're gonna, if you're ever gonna sell something stolen, don't bring it to a pawn shop, because you're probably going to get caught. So we don't have that big of a problem with those issues. We don't deal with fire department at all, that I know of, other than when we get inspected each year. But local law enforcement actually uses it. We have people who come in, they're, these days, ninety percent of any theft, in my opinion, and I'm, my opinion's always right, ninety percent of it is, is family. These days, not break-ins, it's family members. You've got kids and grandkids that are getting into whatever it is, and the next thing you know, they've stolen their granddad's coins out of his sock drawer or whatever, and then they may bring them in, and, and, and we have people who will come in all the time and say, okay, be on the lookout for this, and we do. And so, anyway, we...
So based on those experiences, you would, you would say that not only would it not endanger public health and safety, but it would actually increase...
Absolutely, I'd argue that all day, yes.
And that's because of your reporting requirements?
Absolutely. But in the, at the end of the day, we're just a retail business. We just sell things. We, you come in, in our, in our current shop, you know, it's not a thrift store, or when you walk in, seventy-five-plus percent of what we have is new. So it's not like, you know, some of the old pictures of the old pawn shops twenty years ago.
I liked Coles twenty years ago.
Sir?
It's not Coles. All right, anything further? All right, comments, questions, concerns from the board? All right, thank you very much.
I just got, I hate to do it, but Mr. Kemp, if you don't mind coming up?
Nope, bringing him out of retirement.
Now we can open the can of worms.
If you would, sir, just state your name.
Kevin Kemp.
And what is your experience with the planning of all?
I am the Development Services Director.
And how long have you been doing that?
Just over two years.
I would like to tender Mr. Kemp as an expert in the area of planning.
All right, I think we can accept him as an expert.
And Mr. Kemp, you've had an opportunity to review the application submitted by Mr. Stroud, Mr. Basil?
Yes, sir.
And in your opinion, and based upon the review of that application, do you find it to be in conformity with the land use plan or the official adopted plan under the UDO?
Yes, sir. Its commercial designation is in conformance with the full service designation of Imagine Keratuck and the G2 classification of the Moayak Small Area Plan.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right.
That's all, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. All right, what do we do with this? This is a public hearing. Lost the sheet. No one's signed up this evening for this agenda item. I'm going to open public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this? Seeing no one, I will close the public comment, and...
Can you please say something?
Well, I just closed public com... I guess I can reopen that. Okay. Please come up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Leonard, Leonard Hutt. Pardon me, I can't hear too good, but I couldn't hear everything that's been said here. I live within five hundred feet of this duck-thru and the new pawn shop that they're talking about putting in. And my wife is kind of concerned about our quality of life, the neighborhood, and everything. So she wanted me to be here tonight to talk to you guys. Our taxes, talking about our taxes for our homes, and that neighborhood has went up every year, so I mean, the tax base is increasing in that neighborhood. So, you know, we're, we're happy with what, with our property and everything, and we're just concerned that, you know, what's going to happen with additional people coming in and all that, so she just wanted me to express our opinion here tonight, okay?
Thank you, sir. All right, I will close the public comment now, and remind the board that we can only use testimony in our deliberations this evening. I guess we're to the point of a motion. For or against, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move to approve PB 23-17 Pawn Shop Special Use Permit, because the applicant has demonstrated the proposed use meets the review standards of the UDO. Technical staff comments will be part of the conditions of this permit. The special use permit standards worksheet, the use will not endanger the public health or safety, we've heard testimony to that effect. The use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it's located, and we've had that from the appraisal, Mr. Luther. The use will be in conformity with the Imagine Keratuck 2040 Vision Plan or other officially adopted plans, and Mr. Kemp verified that. And number four, the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities.
I second the motion. Thank you. Any further discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, any opposed?
No.
Oh, one? Okay, thank you. The ayes have it. All right, next up this evening, we have another public hearing. Let's see, on Tulsa Creek Elementary, a resolution authorized filing of application with local government commissioner for Tulsa Creek Elementary School. I keep getting this one tonight.
Yes. Ms. Chairman, before you use a resolution, authorize county staff to file an application for approval of limited obligation bonds to finance the Tulsa Creek Elementary School project. The resolution calls for the financing to be in an amount up to sixty million dollars, although it's anticipated that the financing will be in the amount of fifty-eight million five hundred thousand dollars. There is a requirement of a public hearing, after which you may consider and adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the board? All right, again, this is a public hearing. I have no one signed up to speak to this agenda item. I'll open public comment at this time. And is there anyone who would like to speak to this agenda item? Seeing no one coming forward, then I will close the public hearing on this agenda item, and open a floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Next up is consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next up is closed session. I will move to take us in a closed session, pursue it to NC GS 143-318.1183, to consult the county attorney and to preserve attorney contact privilege. I have a second, please.
Second.
All right, Ms. Selena, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.